Okay. Uh, I think we're in the right place. Hmm.
Yeah, I should probably... Okay. I have not been... Initial response. Yeah. We'll bring it in. Okay. Talk to her.
Are we okay to get this started? It's about you, buddy. Okay, I want to call the Programs Committee to order and ask that Justin Table call.
Okay. Rodden.
Here.
Chen.
Here.
Del. Duran.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Manny.
She has stepped out.
Mendoza.
Here.
Fertula. Selig.
Here.
Steinbrecker. Solomon.
Here. I want to thank everybody for being here on a cold, blustery day. So there's some travel disruptions, so thanks for making all the possible efforts to improve this exciting agenda. I am going to... I'm going to start things off for what they call for public comment. So I'll start first with people here in San Francisco. So is there anybody who wishes to make public comment on the Programs Committee agenda? All right. And go ahead and step forward, and when you're situated, just tell us who you are and... Doug, hold a minute. So thank you.
Thank you. My name is Lauren Klein. I'm the directing attorney of the Legal Aid Association of California. We represent legal services nonprofits all across the state. I'm here today to comment on the proposed changes to the State Bar rules. Thank you. Here to comment on the proposed changes to the State Bar rules with respect to MCLE providers. We just wanted to come today to say thank you to the bar and to the board for engaging with us throughout the process of considering these rule changes. We talked to our community very widely and then submitted public comment and also participated in the focus group discussions, and we're very happy with how that process went and how it turned out, particularly with respect to the multi-day, multi-track events, which is something that we do a lot of. It can be tricky. We... Our mission is to provide free or affordable training to the thousands of legal services attorneys across the state. So this is very important to us, and we're happy that this... That we got to a great solution. And we just hope that as this is implemented, you can continue to take into consideration the very limited resources that nonprofit providers have, but we will be excited to implement the rule changes.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else here in San Francisco? Okay, going once, going twice. We'll now go to the call-in line. Is there anybody on the call-in line who wishes to give public comments? All right. Going once, going twice, but if someone calls in a little bit later and wishes to make public comments, please wait for kind of a role in the conversation and announce yourself. So I will defer my oral report, but I would just comment along with Ms. Klein that I've been working with staff, and I've been really impressed with staff's ability to listen, and not only the ability, but also the willingness to work with our stakeholders and to engage them. So I think staff should really be commended. That's kind of the cart before the horse. I want to maybe talk a little more about that on the agenda item. So going down to business, 3A Annual Recommendation to the Supreme Court of California for Suspension of Licenses, Adulterants, and Payment of State Bar Fees, Penalties, or Costs. So our oral failed. Please take us away.
Good afternoon. This item is a routine audit. What we're asking for is the annual request to provide this Supreme Court with a recommendation for suspension of licensees who have not paid their annual fees by the deadline. We have had good results this year. The amount's still left to pay. There are substantial left number of attorneys who still need to pay, but we are better than we usually are in terms of timing. We have completed all the required notices that we need to have completed at this point, and we have also extensively done email blasts to try to remind licensees that they need to pay. And so the purpose of this item is to give us permission to file the Supreme Court order which will suspend anyone who has not paid by the June 30th deadline or the July 1st deadline until they pay their fees.
All right. Any questions? All right. Seeing none, can I have a motion?
So moved.
All right. First by Joanna, second by Debbie.
Yeah.
All right. And I think we need to take the rule call.
Rodden.
Yes.
Chen.
Yes.
Del. Duran.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Manny.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Fertula. Selig.
Yes.
Steinbrecker. Motion passes.
All right. Great. Thank you. All right. And still in my hot seat, Robert, you want to take us to the next item, 3B regarding MCLE.
So this is also a routine item, just like the suspensions for fees. Attorneys are required to report MCLE by July 1st. This... What the board is doing is slightly different here. Fee suspensions are a formal suspension that is done by the Supreme Court, so we give the Supreme Court an order. MCLE is an administrative action, so we are asking the board to authorize us to place on involuntary inactive status anyone who has not met their MCLE requirement by July 1st, like the fees. We have much better numbers this year than we've seen in some years. We have made all of the required mailings that we regularly make, as well as, again, extensively sending them email to remind them, and the results have been very good. By approving this item, the board will authorize us to do an administrative transfer to involuntarily inactive, and they will remain on that status until they pay the penalties and successfully complete their MCLE.
All right. Any questions? Yes, Debbie.
Any idea why they seem to have better response this year than in previous years?
We think that primarily, as opposed to last year, it's because we had a lot of profile and billing issues, and this year has been much smoother. We continually tried to improve the process, and we did more email blasts, primarily because we weren't fighting fires to do with fees, and so we were on a much more regular process. And also, it's now been a couple cycles that MCLE fees have been done in the same way where it's primarily online, and we think that the attorneys are licensed... The licensees are getting used to the process, and so since it hasn't changed, there's less... They remember, they know how to do it, there's no problem.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, final motion.
So moved.
Okay. Second. Okay. First by Joanna, second by Mark. Is there any further discussion? Any objection to substituting the rule call? Seeing none, motion passes. All right. Moving on to 3C. Again, this one fails, so please take us through the proposed changes to State Bar rules to accommodate minimum continuing legal education provider course upload program. And this is a return from public comments, and we also are joined by Donna Gerschitz.
So this item, as mentioned, is returning from public comment. We put out some rule revisions for public comment, and it has now come back. What these rule revisions concern is a project to automate MCLE provider reporting of attendance records for MCLE. This is a fundamental change in how we do things. Currently, attorneys report that they are in compliance with their MCLE. We do post-reporting audits where we work in some cases with the providers, but generally we have worked... Gotten records only from the attorneys. The change is that we are requiring the providers to give us attendance figures on a rolling basis, and then we will be able to automate the audit process, better inform attorneys of where they stand in terms of completing their MCLE, and also provide a tool for the provider where they can see what MCLE they provided to us. This item is just the rule changes necessary, which are significant, but didn't require too much wording change, but we did make some wording changes to accommodate this and to require the providers to submit MCLE attendance. We put the item out for public comment, as was alluded to previously in the public comment. This is something that providers are concerned about. We received 50 public comments in your packet. We did a summary and kind of highlighted what the issues were, but I wanted to highlight the primary issues. The issues that attorneys were concerned with was providers are concerned about the amount of time and resources this is going to take, and also their concern... It is a... It's viewed as a shift in the burden of who's responsible for keeping the records. At least this was the perception that we had. We want to point out that there is no alteration to the provider rules or require providers to verify attendance. What we have primarily changed is the reporting requirement. The onus will still be on licensees to report that they're compliant. However, we will be providing the background data for them to do that with more certainty. And obviously, providers are very concerned about the time and resources that this is going to take. One of the common themes in public comment was they requested that we extend the amount of time that we were giving them to submit records. We originally put this out at three days, and we have expanded it to 60 days. And as mentioned in public comment, a big issue had to do with what we call multi-day, multi-track events. This is an event where a provider might have a big conference, and they have 15 blocks of instruction where you could choose between one, two, three, five, 10 different courses. And so over the course of a day or two, you might have 50, 100 different course offerings to several hundred attorneys. And the record-keeping on such an event could be quite demanding, and some of these events are put on with providers with fairly limited resources, and this was a huge concern that was addressed. And finally, we had some issues raised about is whatever new system that we're going to develop going to be ADA compliant? This is the call that are the public comment we received, and Donna will address what we did in response to that.
Thanks, Bob. So as Bob indicated, we received 50 public comments. 25 were opposed to the proposal. They... We had public comments from bar associations, from legal aid providers, from law firms, and because the comments... Because there were sort of common themes in the comments, and we were proposing a substantial change, when we received the comments, staff brainstormed to see if there were additional solutions. We had originally proposed that there would propose three different options for how the information could be uploaded. We... Most of the states that do this, I think something like 18 states require this, have one method, and we thought it was more appropriate to develop multiple methods. And so we had developed three methods, but when we received a significant public comment, we really wanted to see if there were additional things that we could do to address that. And so we brainstormed some additional solutions on top of those three solutions to upload the documents, and then convened a feedback session, and we invited all of the people who provided public comment to a meeting here at the bar, and so we could talk about their concerns. We could lay out the additional solutions that we had proposed and see if there were other concerns, get some other suggestions from the providers. I'm repeatedly telling my staff when we put things out for public comment, the point of public comment is not to check a box and say we did it, but to make sure that we're getting it right. And so we really looked to this feedback session as a way to roll out the additional changes that we thought might address the concerns that were raised and to hear if there are other issues that we could address. We made sure to not just have program people in the room, but also to have IT attend that session as well, so that they could respond as to whether or not that technology that was being suggested was something that we were capable of implementing. As Bob said, one of the big issues was the multi-day, multi-track events. And so a good example, right? We've got our Pathways to Justice Conference coming up, June 3rd to June 6th. You can consider that a plug. June 3rd to June 5th. And that is jointly sponsored by the State Bar, the Judicial Council, and the Legal Aid Association of California. There are a number of courses that are going on over the course of that three-day session all at the same time. These are... You know, none of us providers with a lot of money. We don't have the ability to have a tablet at the sign-up for every course at every... That's going on, you know, at the same time. And so how would we address that kind of multi-track, multi-day event? And what we came up with was a structure in which the provider would upload basically the course list, right? These are the 50 courses that we're offering over the course of these three days and the amount of credit that is available. So this... So Course A is 1.5 hours of legal ethics. Course B is just one hour of general MCLE, et cetera. They would upload the full course list, and they would upload one list of all of the attorneys attending the conference. And then when the attorney... When the attorneys go into their My State Bar profile, they're going to have an obligation to verify that they've taken these courses. And so they will click that they have, you know, okay, I'm going to click on my Pathways to Justice Conference because I'm listed as an attorney who's attended that, and I, as the attorney, am under an obligation to identify which courses I took and if I stayed only an hour for that one and a half hour legal ethics training. That is not unlike what happens today. Today, when somebody goes to an MCLE event, they get a certificate that says this was a 1.5-hour event, but also says on it to the attorney, if you have attended less than 1.5 hours, it's on you to make sure that you are counting only that one hour that you attended when you are determining whether or not you are compliant. So it is a way to address the problem, but not sort of stepping back from not reducing the burden, not giving attorneys any greater ability to get around compliance requirements than they have today. We also... That also addressed another issue that folks had raised to us, that this issue of... Excuse me. Are they now suddenly responsible for policing attendance in a way that they hadn't been before? Because if somebody leaves early, are they now required to upload that they only attended 45 minutes? And so we have made clear that this process of the attorney having to go in and verify attendance applies for all of the MCLE that is uploaded. So if the attorney is only attending 45 minutes, again, the same obligation that they have currently would be on them in this new system to say, yes, I attended that one-hour course, but I only attended 45 minutes. We may have certain differences of opinion of whether you should be able to attend just 45 minutes of one-hour course, but that is not an issue that is related to the creation of this new system, so it could be something that gets dealt with in another setting. We also had a great suggestion in our feedback session. Representative from the Sacramento Public Defender's Office was present and talking about the fact that, you know, their office... The vision that I have is that I think their office is located in one of the courthouses. And so they have, you know, pretty much an hour between the morning court session and the afternoon court session that their office offers trainings. And if there is a long sign-up period, then they're not going to be able to have the time to actually conduct the one-hour MCLE training. And so they suggested a QR code, like a barcode. Can we do some scanning so you can just sort of scan something when you walk in the room? That will upload to an Excel spreadsheet or whatever the technology provides, which would then upload into our system. And so, again, because we had our IT folks in the room, we determined that we could put a QR code either on your My State Bar profile or for those folks, and the public defenders are among those folks who actually get the plastic bar card because they needed to go through court security or to go into the jails. And so we'll be looking at putting a QR code. Scanners are somewhere between $5 and $15 bucks a pop, and they can, with scanning technology, scan who's attending and then upload that information. So we are making every effort to make this as simple as possible and provide as many options as possible for providers. I appreciate Ms. Klein coming because I had been in communication with Black, and they were very appreciative of the changes. I'd also been in communication with the California Lawyers Association as sort of another representative of a group who expressed some concerns and attended our feedback session and also said that we can represent if they were supportive when you approached and appreciated the changes that we had made. We certainly didn't reach back out to everybody, but I hope these two groups are representative of the folks that we... The support that we got from the MCLE providers in the changes that we proposed.
All right. Any questions? Yes, Joanna.
I thought the process that you undertook in this case was excellent. I was really, really pleased to see it. I thought we got some positive feedback. It's kind of nice for a change. Anyway, I was at a Placer County Bar annual meeting in April, and the administrator for the Placer County Bar was still up in ours over this. And I tried to explain to her the process, and my guess is, although we had 50 public comments, we had people come to this meeting, we're still going to get torches at the door because people are not understanding it. So I'm curious what the plan is going forward. Are we going to do an FAQ to send out to all the people that are... Have not been involved? What's the plan going forward so we're not dealing with this misinformation?
So once the rule changes goes through, we've kind of sketched out the implementation, and this is a long-term implementation. This rule does not go into effect if you adopt it until December 1st of 2020. And one of the reasons for that is, A, both the development of a system that works really well, and that development will include continuing to work with providers. I have now a pretty good-sized list of providers that really want to help us and are interested and are contacting me, and so we'll continue to get some input into the development and also the development of training materials for the providers. I have emails for all of our providers. In the past, the bar has had something called the Provider Press, which was a quarterly newsletter. We can reactivate some sort of email about this. Once the rule is passed as appropriate, we'll probably add materials to the applications and renewals about the process, and as well as developing policies and procedures and FAQs. We'll have to totally revamp our website as it pertains to MCLE providers.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Because this has generated a lot of public comments, I just want to go one more time to the phone line. Is there anybody on the phone who wishes to make a public comment about the MCLE provider changes? All right. Hearing none. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Okay. First by Rubin, second by Joanna. Again, is there any objection to substituting the rule call?
No.
All right. Hearing none. Motion passes. Excellent job, everybody. Thank you. All right. Speaking of technology, we've got Amy Nunez here to talk to us about item D, pilot rollout of remote proctoring for June 2019, first-year law student examination, July bar examination.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Amy Nunez, Director of the Office of Admissions. I'm also here with Lisa Cummins, Pro Manager for Examinations. So we are exploring and seek your approval to continue to explore remote proctoring as an option for the California Bar Exam as well as for the first-year law students exam. There are a variety of reasons why we seek this option. First is we have a high demand for proctors. When you consider that we have 5,000 examinees for the February bar exam and about 10,000 for the July bar exam, we experience double the need in the summer. The other area that we've had increases is in the number of testing accommodation requests. Since 2000, the total number of TA requests has increased by 70% when you compare that ... The number of requests that we receive today. So between 2016 and 2017, we experienced a 20% increase in the number of testing accommodation requests, and that rate has remained steady. So we still continue to get an increase in the number of testing accommodation requests. What that means for remote proctoring is that there's a greater need because, as you... Many of you might know, or maybe you don't, but testing accommodation requests usually require... They usually entail the need for either a special allocated time, extra time, that is either a time and a half, time and a third, double time, which means that most of these applicants get either one-on-one or a proctor, or perhaps even two or three proctor... Three or two or three applicants per proctor. So there is a high demand for proctors altogether. The next item is the fact that recruiting for proctors has been challenging to us. There is a dwindling supply of people willing to take on proctor jobs. Some of our long-term proctors are aging out. They are retiring from working with us. So... And then hiring new proctors has become increasingly challenging in this active job market. But we've been told by some law schools that they hire some of our same proctors But we've been told by some law schools that they hire some of our same proctors that we use and our pay, they've been reported, our pay is too low. This is despite the fact that in 2017, we offered a 5.6% pay increase to proctors, but it's still smaller when you compare them to other industries. And the bottom line is that the work is very short-term. I mean, most people, they work all four exams, work with us for four times a year and that vary from two to four days for each of those exams. So it's not an appealing position. The other issue that we have at times is that it's a significant factor to consider when taking on this job, and that is that people working at these sessions cannot use their cell phones. You can imagine for, it has a generational effect. We have a lot of young people that come to the exam and that deters them from working at the exam, not having their cell phones. We've had a lot of people either not return or not stay once they show up to the, to proctor an exam. So also the introduction of new proctors at each exam cycle creates inconsistency in the quality of proctoring. So newer proctors are challenged when they have to troubleshoot or absorbing a lot of material at the test site. It takes a few exams for people to become confident about proctoring and witness responsibility. So it's incredibly important and impacts also our ability to document cheating incidents at these exams. So remote proctoring does seem like a viable option, given all these considerations. And the last thing I want to highlight here in terms of why we would search for remote proctoring, and that is, proctors reflect about one-third of our exam expenditures and remote proctoring can provide some cost savings in the long-term. And I'll talk about those cost savings later. So what are some of the benefits of remote proctoring? I've highlighted a few of why we've explored this arena, but proctors provided by temp agencies include a 20%, 20% markup. And I've already discussed the fact that we have a retiring pool of proctors. So our use of temp agencies does become costly. We can also no longer predict how many of our regular proctors come back. So, and we used to be able to do that. There's the increased and inconsistent proctor quality that we can gain from using remote proctoring. And the quality of proctoring is, becomes consistent because of vigilance uses, and I'll talk about it later, artificial intelligence on top of an individual human intervention. So perhaps not initially because there are some startup costs, but eventually remote proctoring can lead to cost savings. Also, remote proctoring provides evidence that can be used when an applicant challenges any cheating allegation. So the system automatically produces cheating evidence for us. So what are the disadvantages of remote proctoring? The first one that comes to mind is the fact that we're unable to proctor an exam that is not, that is not being conducted or taken on a laptop. So for example, if you think about the California Bar Exam, day one, our essay questions that are, are taken in the morning and in the afternoon, and day two consists of the MBE, which is a paper pencil or Stantron form of testing, we would be able to use remote proctoring for day one, but not for day two. The other disadvantage is some of the initial costs that I highlighted. So for example, currently, we do not allow Wi-Fi at our testing locations. And this would require that we provide Wi-Fi at the test centers. But again, when people are at the test center, if, despite the fact that they have Wi-Fi access, the system, so right now, we use Examsoft as a system that people use to enter their questions on a laptop. That system has an automatic lockout system, so other parts of the web will not be, will not be able to be accessed. So things like Google and Examsoft are not compatible. The other cost is goose neck cameras. So the system, as I mentioned, relies on the laptop use because most people will be taking the exam and will be proctored through the laptop camera. When that laptop camera is not available, a goose neck camera would, is, would be the option that they would have to employ for remote proctoring. The other issue that increases our initial cost is really not knowing how to, how many proctors we need onsite. So for example, if somebody's laptop stops working in the middle of the exam, we need to have an onsite proctor available so that there isn't proctoring that happens during that exam. So initially, we planned on having a sufficient number of onsite proctors for that reason. So let's talk about costs. So this is just the cost difference per applicant at each exam site. So for example, for the first year law students exam in 2018, so this is combining both the June and October exams, at a TA site, it costs $3,904 per applicant to administer the exam. At a standard test site, it costs 291 per applicant. This is averaging both of those exams. For the California Bar Exam, it costs at a TA site approximately $2,380 per applicant, while at a standard test site, it costs about $158 per applicant. I mentioned this earlier, but the proctor costs altogether represent about 31% of the total exam administration costs. So about a third of our costs for the exam are generated by the need to pay proctors. So when we look at the cost for proctors, and I'll get specific about the cost for each exam, the onsite proctor, and this is what it costs to date, so for 30 examinees to date, we, our ratio of floor proctors to, to examinees is 1 to 30. So right now, for 30 examinees, we play one floor proctor and somewhere between $185 and $250 at a standard test site. Again, part of that cost, it's, it varies because of the fact that they might not be involved too heavily in all of the training, depending on their experience. For the TA sites, it requires 30 floor proctors, and so that cost is about $8,550. And this is currently at an onsite proctoring. For remote proctoring, given what we know about the budget to date, it would cost us for eight remote proctors at a standard test site, $3,150. And at a TA site, it would cost us the same, at $3,150. And so as you can see here, the cost for a standard test site would go up by about $2,900 for 30 people. And then the cost for a TA site would go down by about $5,400 if we apply our current cost.
Then how my can, oh, sorry. Oh, go ahead. I just, because we have so many more standard test sites and standard test takers, then we do think that the cost would go up overall with the transition to remote proctoring.
Yes, because our initial costs, that I'll cover in a second, but eventually it might stay the same, given the fact that we have a TA foundation that's increasing. And so they might actually balance each other out. So in terms of estimating, estimating the overall cost for implementing this initiative for the June 2019 exam, we're proposing to pilot remote proctoring at one TA site and one standard test site. So this would consist of 130 applicants and the rate is the same. It's $105 per applicant for an eight-hour session. That would cost $13,650. Of these applicants, 100 are going, are scheduled to be at a standard test site and 30 at a testing accommodation site. We have a one-time implementation fee from the contractor of about $2,500. We're assuming that we'll buy 60 goose neck cameras, perhaps at $50, so that's $3,000. We're also loading a contingency amount of $5,000. That would include things like, for example, the cost of a Wi-Fi at the hotel or at the convention center because both of these are at different settings. So that is some of that, that funding would, that would go in there. So it's an approximate cost, overall cost of $24,150 for the June, June exam. For the July exam, again, we would administer remote proctoring or pilot it at two separate sites, one TA and one standard. And we have a cost again of $105 that stays the same for 380 applicants. We would get an additional 100 cameras because, again, these are backups that we would need in the event that somebody's laptop camera is not working. With the same contingency funding that we would need because of Wi-Fi. So there's a couple of considerations also with the Wi-Fi charges. Because one of these areas would be like, for example, a convention center, the Wi-Fi needs to be strong enough and there might be variance in cost based on that too, which is why it can improve that cost altogether. But that cost for the July would be about $49,900. So what are some of the requirements for remote proctoring? So obviously, I've talked about the fact that an examiner needs must use a laptop. That laptop camera will be used, and if that laptop camera is not feasible, then we have these goose neck cameras. We need onsite Wi-Fi, so at the test center, we need Wi-Fi access. We also need a method of communication between the remote proctors and onsite staff. And we plan to do this by having an onsite communicator that's going to communicate between the remote proctors and our staff. And so, so in terms of staffing requirements, as you can see here, we'll, we'll still require floor proctors. And again, this is in the event that we have some, some catastrophic event with a laptop or some laptop users, and we still need some proctoring. So that will still require us to have floor proctors and the ratio is still to be determined based on this piloting. We'll still continue using section proctors, security, subject matter, no, I'm sorry, SMICS, R's, I forgot what they stand for. A staff member in charge at each site and a staff rep. So a section proctor is assigned, as I mentioned, at a standard test site, 1 to 30, a floor proctor. And then a section proctor is somebody who staffs and is basically a runner for the floor proctors. We plan on still using that person to help communicate. We always have security at each of our exams. And so security are the people that, for example, check your admittance ticket coming in and also facilitate the flow of traffic, ensuring that, that they're coming into the exam to ensure that you're not bringing in prohibited items into the exam and such. The additional role that I described earlier is also included in here, and that is that onsite communication proctor or person that's connected to the remote proctors. So how it works, so it doesn't change significantly from what we do now. So when an examiner comes, they prepare their laptop with Examsoft software and they would log into Proctor U. Proctor U is the vendor that we're considering for this pilot. And what that, remote proctor would do is authenticate the examiner. So that is, this person would show us their ID, like a government issued ID, and using facial recognition, confirm that that is the examiner that's taking the exam. So it authenticates that individual. The ratio of remote proctors to examinees is 1 to 4, so we'll have one remote proctor for every four examinees. And also, we will use artificial intelligence running throughout the exam. That AI is looking for erratic eye and hand movement and will alert the onsite person, the communicator that we would have onsite to address that. The entire session is recorded. And as we do now, we have a no intervention policy when we identify cheating or any cheating incidents. What we do is we try to document as, as much as possible. So proctors are trained to document when a cheating incident might be occurring and to maybe bring in another person to identify that. And we don't interrupt that person because it can become disruptive to everyone around them. And we wait until the next break in between questions or perhaps in between lunch spots and so, between lunch and, and the afternoon session. And so we plan to do, adopt the same no intervention policy here. So any erratic movement would be reported to the onsite communicator staff who will signal either to a section proctor or a floor proctor to go and try to collect as much information to determine whether cheating is happening or how. So as I noted here, I've kind of walked through this already. So at a standard test site, we would identify the person with the admittance ticket to get them to their seat. Security would still inspect that they do not bring any prohibited items or that they do not enter the test site. They would sit at their designated seating assignment, prepare their laptop, authenticate with the remote proctor. The announcements would still happen at the exam with the timing and the communicator would alert the remote proctor about the start times and any reminder times that are happening. And with that, does anybody have any questions about the process?
Or Joanna?
I'm curious about, first, what happens if the Wi-Fi doesn't work, which, suddenly, you know, there's a chance that might happen. And the other one is, how is this actually benefiting us versus our current situation since we're still going to need proctors one day?
So the first, to answer your first question about the Wi-Fi, this is something that we're going to test onsite. So our, the vendor, Proctor U, plans to go out to each of these sessions to test it and they can test the signal strength as well. So I think in terms of what happens if the Wi-Fi goes out, that's a separate issue, but we plan on testing in advance at each of these locations.
Are we going to have a contingency plan if you need Wi-Fi?
Yeah, and that gets to your next question. So the next question is like, what are the benefits given that we're still going to have proctors there? I mean, we initially, we plan on having proctors onsite initially in the event that it doesn't work. But once this process has been proven successful, and that's what we're hoping, is that we will not need that many onsite proctors. We'll probably keep the same number of section proctors as these are the people that are walking around and communicating, but for the most part, our, the goal is to reduce the number of floor proctors that we need.
But we're going to need that number for the second day of the exam, right? We're not going to be able to reduce the number of proctors. So is there, do we believe it'll be easier to find proctors for just one day versus two? Is that where there's a benefit?
Yes, I mean, we do have a proctors situation where we have, you know, half of them will report back the second day. We have a drop-off. It'll be easier for us. Our assumption is that it'll be easier for us to hire people for a one-day session rather than a two-day.
Thank you. In addition, we'll need fewer overall. And our staff has been in conversation with the MCD E about the fact that the MBE is still on paper and pencil, and that is a transition that they as well are intending to make. So, but I do want to point out that some of the other benefits, Amy went over them, but they relate to the security of the exam. So I really do think this will improve the security of our exam, given who our proctor pool has been and the fact that our proctor pool is shrinking and becoming more difficult to engage.
Yes, Ruben.
Did I understand correctly that we wouldn't be the first state to be using remote proctors? And could you give us a little more detail on who has and what effect?
Sure. So we would be the first bar jurisdiction to use remote proctoring. But remote proctoring is not foreign to law schools, for example. So we have, even in our current schools, our accredited schools, we have some that are, have remote proctoring, our registered schools. Our correspondent schools use remote proctoring with their students now. And so for law school students, it may not be entirely foreign. In terms of other agencies or licensing agencies that have used this, we know that nursing and real estate license agencies allow remote proctoring for their test, test administration. And they actually allow it from home. So people are taking these exams at home. And Proctor U has experience with over like 800,000 exams in that fashion.
Licensing exams?
Yes, for those two freeness.
All right, any other questions? I just had a couple of little questions. How many incidents are being logged per exam as far as suspected cheating? And I guess how will we log them? What type of proof do we have in order to confront those people we suspect?
Well, we, after every single exam, whether it's first year or bar exam, we collect all of the incident reports and review them and we bring this report to the CDE, alert them about any potential appeals or complaints that might come up as a result of some of these incidents. And we, our last report was something like 36 pages of just a summary of some of these highlights. And so it's a combination of that, that incident reports. That incident report includes cheating, but it also, or suspected cheating, but it also includes incidents that may have taken place, like, you know, people who fall at the exam, people who had a medical emergency at the exam, could finish completing the exam. So in terms of the number of cheating incidents, I would have to pull that report up, but we do count them after every single exam.
All right. Any other questions? Any discussion? It looks like he's poised on bringing something.
I was looking for the number, the total number for both pilots.
I think it was about seventy-five thousand?
Yes.
So I know, you know, one of the things that's been in the news recently is entrance exam cheating. I mean, that's definitely always been something that's been out there, but it gets definitely more in the public spotlight. I think this is a chance for the bar to get ahead of some of that, to utilize technology and to borrow Stacy Spector's, with the wind of technology at our back, to really get ahead of some of this stuff. So it's a seventy-five thousand dollar investment. I know right now, we're looking at every dollar that was spent. So, Lee, do you have anything from that perspective as far as this money being used for that as opposed to other areas? I mean, is there a strong opinion by staff either way as to invest in it now as opposed to later time?
Certainly, we're bringing forward the recommendation because we do believe this should advance. In terms of the budget, we did recently have the opportunity to review the first quarter results for the Office of Admissions. This will not be funded from the General Fund Licensing East, and they are projecting a surplus so far this year that will more than cover this seventy-five thousand dollar cost. So I think it's a really worthwhile investment for a pilot, really to be open to see how this actually works.
Some more?
Second.
All right. First by Ruben, second by Sean. Is there any objection to substituting the roll call? All right, seeing non-motion passes. All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, then Amy is here to give us a Office of Admissions update.
So there are a couple of items I want to highlight, and that is, tomorrow, our results for the February 2019 California Bar Exam will be released. So approximately four thousand six hundred and thirty-nine applicants completed the exam. And as mentioned, our results will be available on the website at 6:00 PM. And then for the general public, the pass list will be available on Sunday, May 19, at 6:00 AM. So more to come on that. The next item I wanted to talk about relates to something you just brought, Brandon, that is protecting the integrity of the California Bar Exam, the first-year exam, and our legal specialization exams. So recently, we learned about the college admissions bribery scandal, so also called Operation Varsity Blues. And so this is the scenario where parents paid consultants to falsely certify learning disabilities for accommodations such as extra time on exams. And parents also used false disability reports from psychologists and invented false travel plans so that they could move to a specific test center. And once it's signed to that specific test center, someone that they had paid would manipulate the proctor by having them either take the exam on behalf of the student or having another person there to test for the exam rather than the student themselves. So part of our mission is to ensure the integrity of the bar exam process, and as such, I think we employ mechanisms that would prohibit that level of cheating and exam process manipulation. We want to describe those to you here today. So first, in terms of proctor assignments, those assignments happen very close to the exam. So while we ask proctors for their preferences as to what type test center they might be available for, they're not aware of what area, what room, or individual they're going to be assigned to until they arrive at that test site. Also, due to the proctor availability constraints that I described earlier, original assignments may change. So for example, staff may learn that a testing accommodation applicant assigned to a private room failed to show up, and that proctor will be reassigned to another part where they might be needed at the exam. So essentially, assigning an exam need to a specific proctor is not feasible under our current operations. Secondly, a request for special accommodations. As I noted earlier, one of the areas that was manipulated is false documentation for either extra time or special accommodation. Our process requires medical, updated, up-to-date medical documentation, and that is carefully reviewed by our staff and by paid consultants. So the staff review the documentation for completeness and accuracy before submitting it to paid medical experts that are hired by the Office of Admissions. So whether it's an initial petition or an appeal on a decision, consultants weigh in on the diagnosis, the supporting medical documents, and the proposed accommodation to determine that it's appropriate, it's an appropriate recommendation. And so this review ensures that we, those who truly need an accommodation have access to them. And so I'm not sure if anybody has any other questions about that process.
Yes, Ruben?
I do have a question about that process for the determination initially.
Yes.
Do you have any statistics about how many we deny? How many requests we deny?
Well, denial is, comes in various forms. So perhaps somebody might submit an application that where they're requesting time and a half, a private room, a transcriber, and something else. Some of those, sometimes what we do is our consultants may not agree with the full remedy, and you might get a partial, partial accommodation. That is, we might give somebody rather than time and a half, time and a quarter. So in terms of coming up with those statistics, they're blurred by that fact, that the fact that we sometimes provide part of that accommodation, so it's not a whole. And so the stats are very difficult to gauge for that reason.
But I can tell you that as a proportion, we don't really deny that thing. I mean, it's not like we deny half or anything like that. We don't really, as a percentage of the number that we get, we don't deny that.
Thank you.
And that means complete denial. You know, we may deny it, like Amy said, a part of what they're requesting, but complete denial, it's not that thing.
Yes, Joel?
I can't imagine there'd be enough money in the world for this, but I understand some people actually take the test for the student. And is there some way to make sure that people can't get in under an assumed identity?
Yes. So the two things that we do is, first, you have to bring an admittance ticket, which maybe might be easy to produce, but the other thing is we ID the person. So I described what it would look like under remote proctoring, that we would have that, and I never got talking about that, but we would have an authenticating process that identifies that identity based on a government ID. But in person, when at the exam now, when they come to the exam, they sit at their spot, they produce an ID that the proctor looks at in order to give them their admittance card that they use to go in and out of the room. So we do try to use an ID to ensure that the person who should be taking the exam is.
Can someone submit a fake ID in anticipation of the test that somebody else is going to be taking it? Or?
Well, they could bring a fake ID to the exam. Yes, that can happen, but we check for the name. I mean, all our materials packaged under that person's name, so.
That's the whole point of a fake ID, it's under that person's name, but with the person who's taking the test, their picture.
Yeah.
So I'm just trying to figure out.
Well, we use a government-issued ID. I mean, with our new AIMS portal, the entire law school history is embedded in that, meaning when you start your, for example, the first application that we'd see coming across our office now is not going to be a bar exam. It's going to be registering as a law student. We confirm that you're allocated to that school, that you become eligible to sit for the bar exam once we get a certificate of good standing. So we have all of that information before someone gets to the bar exam. In terms of getting an ID issued with somebody else's face on it when they get to the exam, that would be the challenge. We're challenged with that now. We assume that if your face is on that government-issued ID, that you are that person. One thing that, that remote proctoring could do is address that thing. We're just talking about the basic, now, the basic practice is that we use whatever they bring in to match against their identity.
I think the bottom line is we don't have a full-prove system, and I don't know that one could ever be created. We do have these checks and balances in place, and this particular issue will benefit from AI proctoring, because the AI tool presumably is something we can ask Proctor U, would pick up on the fact that a government-issued ID wasn't essentially a fake ID. But I think we have to acknowledge that we don't have a hundred percent full-prove system, because I don't know that one exists. I will say that the Committee of Bar Examers is very interested in the testing accommodation process, reviewing it. It's been on our own internal work plan for some time, looking at our medical consultants for example, and perhaps setting some policies for rotation of those consults, which I think is probably a best practice as well.
I'm used Proctor U, and they actually ask you questions to verify your identity. So they'll say, what address were you living at in 2001? And they'll ask you other things that kind of verify something like that. And so it's way more of an oversight than just someone sitting in a room. And so they do verify, not just showing your ID, but you have to, I think it's like five questions that you have to identify throughout your history, where you grew up, on the address, the numbers of your address when you were in third grade or something like that, the things you get from your background, they're called.
That's good.
It's been a while since I went through the moral character and fitness application, but I seem to remember submitting a photo with that application. Do we have any sort of photo requirements, either?
No.
Has that been discussed as far as having a requirement that a photo be submitted with the moral character or at some point during the admission process, and then checking out with a government-issued ID?
So with the use of our new AIMS system, we've considered incorporating a system, and I think Uber and Airbnb have this, where you take a picture of your government-issued ID, the front and back. It confirms that that is a government-issued ID, and that picture matches. The idea is to use that picture as part of your admittance ticket on top of having to bring your government-issued ID to the exam. So it is something that we can put in place now that we have the AIMS system. We're just trying to make sure we use the system for some bit, for some time, to adult that.
Don't we also fingerprint at the site?
No, not yet.
All right. Any other questions? Yes, Mark?
We don't require law students or applicants to submit fingerprints, do we?
Well, as part of the moral character applications, you do for the Department of Justice as part of your background check, but we used to do that at the exam sites, and we no longer do that. So we used to collect fingerprints at the exam.
Right. That could be another alternative.
Do you know why you stopped? I'm sorry. Do you know why you stopped doing the fingerprints? Was that a legislative thing that said?
No. Well, two things. One is that we collected them in the event that there was an identity issue. We weren't processing all of them because it would be costly. I mean, we have about sixteen thousand people a year that are taking the bar exam. And we did it as an added security measure in those scenarios, but when we have suspected cheating, we dress it with that applicant, so we didn't need to go after. So part of it is that we had a lot of fingerprints that we were collecting and not acting on it.
I just think with the new technology, with this AI, that maybe all of this is a junk print, you know, like sometimes some banks will actually, you know, where they'll pass your check to just do a unprint kind of thing, and maybe that would be something that could be worked in with the computerization that you're doing now? Or they just do that and verify that you're that person?
All right. Well, it's a great idea, so we will continue this conversation. So thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
All right. Review of metrics for Office Under Programs Committee per view. How do you?
Yes, so just a quick item. Again, these metrics are what would be standard items on all relevant committees. In the agenda item is outlined those first-quarter metrics where performance targets were not met, and I'm just going to briefly go over those. First, with respect to our call center, which we call our resource center, we have failed to meet our performance target of seventy-five percent. Of callers report high levels of overall satisfaction with their experience. We've begun to look into this issue since the March meeting, really looking at our wait times and call abandonment times. At this point, we've determined that we need to get some support from specialists in the call center business. So we will be executing a small contract, but a technical assistance contract to take a look at our data. I will note that in engaging the vendor, one of the questions I was asked was, just from the preliminary review of the data, the indicator, there was an indication that we would ultimately require more staff because our call volume is quite high. And she asked me, is that a possibility? Because I guess she works with many organizations where they identify the needs, but there is no opportunity to expand staffing. And I would note, of course, that it's an issue we would have to bring forward, I would bring forward to the board if there was a need for substantially more staff performing this function, because you may recall that in our funding means that we identified as part of our overall 2020 B bill negotiation process, the only new staff identified as part of that effort were staff for the Office of the Chief Trial Council. And in that way, it's a very conservative package. We have not identified additional new positions for any other part of the organization. So while I'm sure we can find internally the resources to augment the call center to a limited extent, if there was a very significant expansion recommended, that would be a policy decision that we'd have to bring forward to the board. But just do want you to be aware that we recognize, I recognize, that this is an ongoing issue. Some of you have been contacted by folks that have tried unsuccessfully to reach out to us. We're not ignoring or taking it seriously. The next metric, I consider the deviation from the performance target not significant. I can address that one. The last one has to do with monitoring bank compliance with agreed-upon interest rates. This is a really interesting area of our work. It ties directly to the amount of IOLTA funding that will be available for distribution annually. We've reported previously that due to a combination of both the improved economy and staff's efforts in this area, the IOLTA revenue has increased very significantly over the last year, nearly doubling, and we anticipate another very significant increase will be allocated out in 2020. That being said, the goal of having compliance monitored for the hundreds of banks, nearly two hundred banks in California, of having that compliance monitored for all banks has not yet been achieved. And what I've asked Helen Hong, the Director of the Office of Access and Inclusion, to do is to present to this committee in July on the entirety of that body of work. As I said, it's interesting. I'm not so sure how much of it has been shared with the board in the past. She has an idea of focusing our efforts on the top twenty to thirty banks in the state that hold about ninety percent of the IOLTA deposits, as opposed to trying to address all two hundred at the same time. So you'll hear more about that in July. That's all I have, unless there are questions.
All right. Any questions? All right, thank you. And now we're going to go to our last agenda item, review of selected strategic plan objectives. Vaughn Herschewitz?
Thank you. This item will be equally quick. We'll be bringing to the Programs Committee, as we will to all committees, on a periodic basis, updates on the progress of implementation of strategic plan objectives that are within the purview of the committee. The objectives that we're bringing over the course of the rest of today deal with our objectives where implementation has been delayed. The one objective that I am here to talk to you about is the objective that would require all attorneys, that would mandate that all attorneys report firm size and practice type to the state bar and maintain and update that information. Our goal was that that would happen no later than January 1, 2019. Essentially, as we started talking about this objective, and you may recall, the objective came out of the 2018 Board Planning Session, where we were looking at preventative, preventative measures and preventative education opportunities for attorneys. And one of the things that was suggested was, you know, we've got a lot of attorneys who transitioned to solo practice or small firm, and they've never touched a client trust account, for example, in their life. And so this was. And so this was intended really as a preventative measure. If we know that they transfer to a small firm or a solo practice, we would send them a welcome or a congratulatory letter. "Hey, I just see that you transferred to a solo practice." You know, "Congratulations, you know, welcome. Here are some resources that might be available, that might be of interest to you," and provide them some information on client trust accounting or ethics obligations and dealing with clients in a way that they never did at their big firm or government practice. That's where that came about. And as we started talking about it over the course of the year, it morphed into the much larger State Bar, My State Bar Profile Survey that we put out in January. Survey that we are very proud of the results. We've gotten 100,000 results?
120,000.
120,000 responses at this time. But the survey was voluntary, and all of the questions on it were voluntary. You could, you were required to go through the survey, but you could skip any of the questions as you came to it. So these firm size questions and practice type questions were asked, but it was voluntary. So we did sort of get away slightly, veer away slightly from this particular requirement where we mandate that we provide this information. We still think it is important, and staff's plan is to move forward and move forward with that objective and develop the IT infrastructure to mandate that. And there are certainly a number of ways to do that. Obviously, we'll want to, that survey was not a one-time survey. We want to continue getting that information. We could just make certain questions in that survey mandatory. We could build it the way now, if you haven't touched your My State Bar profile in six months, when you log on, it says, "Please verify your address." It could do that with this as well. So there are ways to build that IT infrastructure, and we will look to do that. One of the things that I wanted to put to all of you attached to this agenda item is a copy of the survey that was sent out. Because we wanted to take a look, while we are looking at making certain components mandatory, are there other things that maybe you would recommend that we make mandatory? For example, the Malpractice Insurance Working Group recommended that we require that all attorneys report to us on whether or not they have malpractice insurance. That, too, was a question in the survey. So whichever way we choose to develop the infrastructure to make it mandatory, we could certainly incorporate that question. And I wanted you all to take the opportunity to think about whether there were other pieces of data that you would suggest that we make mandatory. Certainly not something that you need to have an answer for right now, but to the extent that any of you have some suggestions on that, you can send them my way. And if I get some, then we can put this on the July agenda for a discussion on that topic.
All right, any questions? Joanna.
I just completed that survey two days ago for the first time because I paid my fees so early in the process, the survey wasn't up yet. There's really very little to go to your profile for unless you're paying your fees at this point. So I imagine that, you know, not everybody's anxious to pay their fees, but for those that did pay their fees as soon as they got a notification about it, you know, we're going to have a lag until next time where they're going to finally answer the survey. I just would be curious, before we mandated anything, I'd like to see the level of participation get volunteer, to see if it is significant enough that we don't have to mandate something. So it's, but I don't think we're going to get that until we at least have another fee cycle when everyone will have a chance to see the survey.
Well, I think it depends on the purpose of the data collection. Because right now, we have over half of licensed attorneys or over half of the active attorneys that have responded to the survey. So from a statistical significance point of view, we've already achieved it, to do aggregate types of reporting. But I think the intention behind the requirement to report your firm size was very specific and individualized, so that then it could trigger a requirement to perhaps do a self-assessment akin to the other states that require that, and again, overlapping with the Malpractice Insurance Working Group recommendation. So if the board still wanted to pursue that, which is in the strategic plan, we would have to require it of everybody. It's different than being able to produce general statistical reports on various topics.
But since we haven't gotten to the normal requiring any of that stuff, we're not sure that requiring the data is necessary yet. With the malpractice issue, I'm not sure there's a lot of value to finding out who has malpractice insurance and who doesn't. If we're not requiring anybody to report it to us. And I know one of the data points that was really missing is how many attorneys out there have a malpractice claim against them that they haven't paid, or a judgment against them they haven't paid? What was the actual harm to the consumer? We just don't know that. And from the attorney side, really, the only information we could get from the attorney side is whether or not they have a judgment they haven't paid, or they have a malpractice claim that hasn't been covered by insurance with their own personal finances before we even address the issue, whether or not to mandate it. We just couldn't measure the harm to the public at this stage. I just, I wouldn't be, until we know we want to mandate something as far as requirements, I'm not sure how much we want to mandate response to the survey unless it's absolutely necessary to get exact data going forward.
So the strategic plan does currently say that we will require all attorneys to report firm size and practice type. So you're suggesting that you think there should be a strategic plan amendment? I think, you know, move that forward through Jason and Alan and figure out how to do that. But we, I think Dawn, this agenda item is being responsive to this existing strategic plan objective, which we have failed to meet in terms of the January 1, 2019 implementation date.
If we're already mandating that under our strategic plan, I think we probably shouldn't have the question mandatory, unless we are going to mandate it. The board's already made a decision that we need to get that, we need to have that information. But I don't know if we need to go back and look at it as far as what do we need the information for, but it sounds like we want the information so that if there's a change, we can do things that. I think we're ready to do that yet. I don't know if we want to change the timeline or what, but if we want to, if we want to, in fact, actively engage attorneys that change the practice area, then we have to do it, but it's all in our plan.
Yeah, it's definitely, it was, as I said, part of our preventative education efforts. Because there are certainly those attorneys who, as I said, you know, have never, I've been an attorney for 25 years, I've never touched a client trust account in my life. I'd like to think, because I spent a year and a half at OCTC, I have a pretty good sense of what the requirements are. But there are folks who have never touched a client trust account, have never had the frequent, you know, interaction requirements with their, with clients to provide them significant, you know, updates on, updates on significant developments. They don't, they simply don't know what those requirements are because they haven't had that kind of client contact. And so providing them the resources at the front end, these are not, you know, individuals who are maliciously committing misconduct. These are individuals who are simply unaware of what the requirements are and being pointed in the right direction might help avoid eventual harm to a client.
I'm wondering if we need to start, if we have to start mandating the collection of that information now if we're doing it upon the trigger of a change. We would have to know what the baseline is, and that would require getting it now, getting it from everybody so that we know when to send it in the future. I don't know what the answer is.
Something maybe just to get a temperature of the committee. Is everybody okay putting this on the July agenda for more of a discussion? Whether that's through the Executive Committee or Programs Committee on, you know, expanding the type of data that we're going to make, you know, the requiring people to provide, are there any strong objection to that? To, I guess, putting it on the July agenda, at least discussing that?
I think what we could do for July is bring forward a proposed rule reflecting the strategic plan objective as it currently stands. And there are a number of objectives that are related to this issue. So if it was going to be changed, if we were going to eliminate the requirement to report firm size and practice type, there would be other objectives that would be implicated and we need to change, so we could identify that. In addition, thank you, Di, for sending this to me, a reminder that we are now required to collect firm size data such torally. We are getting that from complainants who file complaints at OCTC, and they are obviously not the best source to opine on what the size of a firm is. The attorney, him or herself, is more able to give us that data accurately. So that would be a reason to mandate the reporting of this information irrespective of, you know, any other reason. But we can certainly bring that back in July, as well as the data we have collected so far, for example, on the malpractice question, to engage this committee in further discussion.
All right, any other discussion on this? All right, I appreciate the robust conversation we have today. And if there is no objection, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. All right, so you can adjourn. Jason, do we have time for a five-minute break, or do you want to go right into that?
Yeah.
All right, five minutes, so everybody can be back here about 2:25.
Next, the members can, unless they take their places, anything we will call.
Okay. Can you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Jason?
Yeah.
Alan? Mark Brock?
Here.
Ruben Duran?
Here.
Renee LeBrock? Debbie Manning?
Here.
Joanna Mendoza?
Here.
Brandon Stolling?
Here.
Leah Wilson?
Here.
This is a call for public comments. And just to make introductions, it's Jason Lee, Chair of the Executive Committee. If anyone wishes to make public comment on something that's on the agenda, please do so now. Anyone on the, oh? All right, I'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a law report. There is none, nothing on the consent agenda. Moving on to Item 3A, which is a proposal to replace our current training regimen with a web-based, module-based training effort. If everyone recalls, there was an effort to really institutionalize the way the board did its business in the context of historical practices, in the context of our board book, and to transition the new trustees into this very special world. So we did do that. And we did that with regularity since, I think, we were two years. And what we've observed since that time, in order to, to, I think, increase the efficiency of our meetings, is this proposal here, which is to transition the live sessions to a web-based format where each trustee can take his or her to a web-based format where each trustee can take his or her training on his or her own time. format where each trustee can take his or her training on his or her own time. format where each trustee can take his or her training on his or her own time. So that is what the proposal is. So that is what the proposal is. So that is what the proposal is. I think it's a good way to sort of segment the business of the board with the knowledge I think it's a good way to sort of segment the business of the board with the knowledge I think it's a good way to sort of segment the business of the board with the knowledge base that's required of a trustee in our process. base that's required of a trustee in our process. base that's required of a trustee in our process. Any comments, questions? Any comments, questions? Any comments, questions? Joanna? Joanna? Joanna?
Just a couple of things. Just a couple of things. Just a couple of things. I want to make sure that these are available publicly, just as our training sessions are, I want to make sure that these are available publicly, just as our training sessions are, I want to make sure that these are available publicly, just as our training sessions are, of course, because they're really informative for those who care. of course, because they're really informative for those who care. of course, because they're really informative for those who care. I'm not that they can be viewed by very many people, but I think it's good to have them I'm not that they can be viewed by very many people, but I think it's good to have them I'm not that they can be viewed by very many people, but I think it's good to have them publicly available. publicly available. publicly available. And also, one of the things missing by doing it this way is the ability to ask questions And also, one of the things missing by doing it this way is the ability to ask questions And also, one of the things missing by doing it this way is the ability to ask questions during presentations. during presentations. during presentations. So I want to make sure that we made it clear with an email and phone number who the trustee So I want to make sure that we made it clear with an email and phone number who the trustee So I want to make sure that we made it clear with an email and phone number who the trustee can contact with questions about the content, so that they have the ability to ask those can contact with questions about the content, so that they have the ability to ask those can contact with questions about the content, so that they have the ability to ask those questions. 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 And of course, if we are hooking people up with mentors on the board, that would also And of course, if we are hooking people up with mentors on the board, that would also And of course, if we are hooking people up with mentors on the board, that would also be someone they could communicate with. be someone they could communicate with. be someone they could communicate with. I think it's a good idea. I think it's a good idea. I think it's a good idea.
Disappoints will take them. Disappoints will take them. Disappoints will take them. Any other questions for the discussion? Any other questions for the discussion? Any other questions for the discussion? Can I have a motion? Can I have a motion? Can I have a motion?
Second. Second. Second.
Joanna and then Brandon with the seconds. Joanna and then Brandon with the seconds. Joanna and then Brandon with the seconds. Can I substitute role call? Can I substitute role call? Can I substitute role call? Any objections? Any objections? Any objections? All right. All right. All right. That passes. That passes. That passes. So let's move on to item 3B, which is the ABA House of Delegate Annual Appointment. So let's move on to item 3B, which is the ABA House of Delegates Annual Appointment. So let's move on to item 3B, which is the ABA House of Delegates Annual Appointment. And I believe that is a Mark and Brett an item. And I believe that is a Mark and Brett an item. And I believe that is a Mark and Brett an item. I'll leave it to you guys. I'll leave it to you guys. I'll leave it to you guys.
Mark, do you want to present on this, or? Mark, do you want to present on this, or? Mark, do you want to present on this, or?
Actually, didn't I recuse myself from this? Actually, didn't I recuse myself from this? Actually, didn't I recuse myself from this?
No, this is the ABA. No, this is the ABA. No, this is the ABA.
I'm pressing the wrong button. I'm pushing the wrong button. I'm pushing the wrong button.
Yeah, although I take it. Yeah, although I take it. Yeah, although I take it. So we are pleased to make the following two recommendations for reappointment and appointment So we are pleased to make the following two recommendations for reappointment and appointment So we are pleased to make the following two recommendations for reappointment and appointment to the ABA House of Delegates California delegation. to the ABA House of Delegates California delegation. to the ABA House of Delegates California delegation. The State Bar gets to appoint 11 members to this House of Delegates. The State Bar gets to appoint 11 members to this House of Delegates. The State Bar gets to appoint 11 members to this House of Delegates. As you'll note, six of those appointments remain with the State Bar. As you'll note, six of those appointments remain with the State Bar. As you'll note, six of those appointments remain with the State Bar. Five were transferred to the California Lawyers Association. Five were transferred to the California Lawyers Association. Five were transferred to the California Lawyers Association. So we are appointing two, CLA is delegating three. So we are appointing two, CLA is delegating three. So we are appointing two, CLA is delegating three. The two individuals that we are recommending is Miss Esther Lynn and Michelle Filo. The two individuals that we are recommending is Miss Esther Lynn and Michelle Filo. The two individuals that we are recommending is Miss Esther Lynn and Michelle Filo. So those are Mark and I's recommendations based upon the output for. So those are Mark and I's recommendations based upon the output for. So those are Mark and I's recommendations based upon the output for.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? Joanna with motion? Joanna with motion? Joanna with motion?
Second. Second. Second.
Ruben. 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 All right, can I substitute role call? All right, can I substitute role call? All right, can I substitute role call? Role call, any objections? Role call, any objections? Role call, any objections? Right, matter passes. Right, matter passes. Right, matter passes. Moving on to item 3C. Moving on to item 3C. Moving on to item 3C. This is the Judicial Counsel appointments, also Brandon and Mark. This is the Judicial Counsel appointments, also Brandon and Mark. This is the Judicial Counsel appointments, also Brandon and Mark.
All right, Mark actually recused himself. All right, Mark actually recused himself. All right, Mark actually recused himself.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
And just in continuing with the trend here, I am recommending, who was on this with me? And just in continuing with the trend here, I am recommending, who was on this with me? And just in continuing with the trend here, I am recommending, who was on this with me? There was one other board member I forget who it was. There was one other board member I forget who it was. There was one other board member I forget who it was. They're not here. They're not here. They're not here. I think it was Alan. I think it was Alan. I think it was Alan. Anyway, this is a well put-together agenda item on my part. Anyway, this is a well put-together agenda item on my part. Anyway, this is a well put-together agenda item on my part. I apologize. I apologize. I apologize. Anyway, so Max Will Prin is who we are recommending to serve on Judicial Counsel and look forward Anyway, so Max Will Prin is who we are recommending to serve on Judicial Counsel and look forward Anyway, so Max Will Prin is who we are recommending to serve on Judicial Counsel and look forward to his work on that committee if, if approved by this, so that's my recommendation. to his work on that committee if, if approved by this, so that's my recommendation. to his work on that committee if, if approved by this, so that's my recommendation.
I have a, isn't this the one we had one applicant? I have a, isn't this the one we had one applicant? I have a, isn't this the one we had one applicant? It's interesting because I don't know how this is playing out in other areas, but I'm It's interesting because I don't know how this is playing out in other areas, but I'm concerned about the fact we don't have one. concerned about the fact we don't have one. Fortunately, he's very qualified, but I'm wondering how much losing the help, you know, Fortunately, he's very qualified, but I'm wondering how much using the help, you know, the sections and the trade association function from the organization is impacting people's the sections and the trade association function from the organization is impacting people's desire to apply for things. desire to apply for things. And if there's something we should be doing more proactively to get qualified applicants And if there's something we should be doing more proactively to get qualified applicants for some of these positions. for some of these positions. I don't know what it looks like in other committees and commissions, but it's unfortunate I don't know what it looks like in other committees and commissions, but it's unfortunate that we only had one to choose from. that we only had one to choose from. Not that it's a bad choice, but it'd be nice in the future if we're not in this predicament. Not that it's a bad choice, but it'd be nice in the future that we're not in this predicament.
I don't know if you remember, Sarah, I thought for this particular appointment as I don't know if you remember, Sarah, I thought for this particular appointment as the Judicial Counsel liaison, we had previously had situations where we only had one applicant. the Judicial Counsel liaison, we had previously had situations where we only had one applicant.
Yeah, it's very common. Yeah, it's very common.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it's a lot of work. And it's a lot of work. I'm not sure if that's what is keeping people from applying. I'm not sure if that's what is keeping people from applying. We do the same recruitment for the Judicial Counsel that we do for all the other subentities. We do the same recruitment for the Judicial Counsel that we do for all the other subentities. And for some reason, we don't get much of a return. And for some reason, we don't get much of a return.
But this particular. But this particular.
Are we having the same problem with other subentities? Are we having the same problem with other subentities?
No. No.
No payments? No payments?
We've had a pretty healthy return. We've had a pretty healthy return. And for one reason or another, and again, I'm not sure if it's because there is just, And for one reason or another, and again, I'm not sure if it's because there is just, this is such a commitment, serving on the Judicial Counsel, a pretty onerous commitment. this is such a commitment, serving on the Judicial Counsel, a pretty onerous commitment. I'm not sure if that's what it is or what, but we do the same sort of outreach that I'm not sure if that's what it is or what, but we do the same sort of outreach that we do with the others. we do with the others. And what we should consider doing is figuring out, you know, what other kind of outreach And what we should consider doing is figuring out, you know, what other kind of outreach we can do to get more applications in. we can do to get more applications in.
Yeah, I see make former board members that could point at it, especially reaching Yeah, I see make former board members that could point at it, especially reaching out to them. out to them. Good for them. Good for them.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It is, and it is, and unless we just put a plug for the Judicial Counsel, the individuals It is, and it is, and unless we just put a plug for the Judicial Counsel, the individuals that have served on the Counsel include former chairs and presidents of this State Bar, that have served on the Counsel include former chairs and presidents of this State Bar, either prior to or following, as well as very reputable lawyers who have later gone either prior to or following, as well as very reputable lawyers who have later gone to be judges. to be judges. It's a great way to participate in the sort of principles of the judicial system. It's a great way to participate in the sort of principles of the judicial system. And I'll note that Max is a Jenny alum, so he joins a number of Geniums who have played And I'll note that Max is a Jenny alum, so he joins a number of Geniums who have played a role in the Judicial Council. a role in the Judicial Council. Any, do I have a motion? Any, do I have a motion?
Second. Second.
Joanna, I think Joanna got that. Joanna, I think Joanna got that. Ruben? Ruben?
Ruben can have it also. Ruben can have it also.
No, it's okay, I'm okay to be. No, it's okay, I'm okay to be.
All right. All right.
Any objections, do we substitute their role call? Any objections, do we substitute their role call?
Mark just left. Mark just left.
Ah, yes, okay. Ah, yes, okay. This is the role call. This is the role call.
Is it because he's recused? Is it because he's recused?
He recused himself. He recused himself.
But we still have to do role call. But we still have to do role call.
Yeah, right. Yeah, right.
Okay. Okay.
Jason Lee? Jason Lee?
I don't think I have one. I don't think I have one.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. Ruben Duran? Ruben Duran?
Yes. Yes.
Jenny Manning? Jenny Manning?
Yes. Yes.
Joanna Mendoza? Joanna Mendoza?
Yes. Yes.
Brandon Stolling? Brandon Stolling?
Yes. Yes.
So we have four. So we have four. Four, yes. Four, yes. Four and five. Four and five. Oh, so no, that. Oh, so no, that. This is a good question. This is a good question.
Four is four. Four is four.
Four. Four.
Four is four, we have seven members. Four is four, we have seven members.
Okay, okay, so. Okay, okay, so.
We're good? We're good?
We're good, yeah. We're good, yeah.
Yeah, we're good.
Excellent. Excellent. So with no further matters before committee, I will adjourn. So with no further matters before committee, I will adjourn. Thank you. Thank you.
We have one other item. We have one other item. Dag, can you come on behind me? Dag, can you come on behind me? Dag was mentioning this very quick item, just oral, because there were no metrics Dag was mentioning this very quick item, just oral, because there were no metrics that do not meet performance targets. that do not meet performance targets. I wanted him to just give a quick overview. I wanted him to just give a quick overview.
Right.
I don't know if he's going to brag. I don't know if he's going to brag. We had talked briefly about some of the work. We had talked briefly about some of the work.
Sorry Dag. Sorry Dag.
You weren't hyperlinked, so I just pass over you. You weren't hyperlinked, so I just passed over you.
It's a Dag bragging. It's a Dag bragging.
So the items that are under the executive committee, we have the high-level metrics, So the items that are under the executive committee, we have the high-level metrics, and then we have like lower-level metrics that are on the whole report that Leah is and then we have like lower-level metrics that are on the whole report that Leah is giving to the board trustees tomorrow. giving to the board trustees tomorrow. But if you look at that report, I apologize, I'm going to just roll through these pages But if you look at that report, I apologize, I'm going to just roll through these pages really quickly here. really quickly here. On the highest level of role that we're applying is satisfaction of stakeholders for On the highest level of role that we're applying is satisfaction of stakeholders for the presentation of board meetings. the presentation of board meetings. And we are only at this time identifying who the stakeholders are, and the stakeholders And we are only at this time identifying who the stakeholders are, and the stakeholders are the board trustees. are the board trustees. So you're going to be getting surveys of satisfaction of the quality of the services So you're going to be getting surveys of satisfaction of the quality of the services that we're providing and putting together. that we're providing and putting together. And then the other item is the ensuring the diversity of board and committee applicant And then the other item is the ensuring the diversity of board and committee applicant pool. pool. And this too is where we're at the point right now simply of establishing a baseline. And this too is where we're at the point right now simply of establishing a baseline. And so we collected data on the applicant pool and are establishing the baseline of And so we collected data on the applicant pool and are establishing the baseline of data that in the future we will then tie with what our applicant pool looks like against. data that in the future we will then tie with what our applicant pool looks like against.
The other one I think would be standardizing the subentity training. The other one I think would be standardizing the subentity training.
I have a longer list that we could go through. I have a longer list that we could go through. There's a more complete list at the back. There's a more complete list at the back. I would encourage all of the board trustees to review the full list at the back. I would encourage all of the board trustees to review the full list at the back.
So the full list is all of the metrics, some of which are not quote-unquote due yet. So the full list is all of the metrics, some of which are not quote-unquote due yet. The subentity trainings was partially completed as of the last reporting period. The subentity trainings was partially completed as of the last reporting period. So I had thought maybe we could update the board with this committee on what we're So I had thought maybe we could update the board with this committee on what we're doing with respect to those, which I think our plan is to have that fully implemented doing with respect to those, which I think our plan is to have that fully implemented by the fall. by the fall.
So for the subentity trainings, what we're looking to do is something similar to what So for the subentity trainings, what we're looking to do is something similar to what we've been talking about in terms of creating modules that will allow for, for remote we've been talking about in terms of creating modules that will allow for remote training. training. But we're also looking to have a full day of training at which we would bring together But we're also looking to have a full day of training at which we would bring together as many of the members of the subentities as we can to do some of the principal trainings as many of the members of the subentities as we can to do some of the principal trainings related to compliance issues as well as related to issues of gender bias and racial related to compliance issues as well as related to issues of gender bias and racial ethnic bias and other types of compliance issues that we would want to handle in a ethnic bias and other types of compliance issues that we would want to handle in a full meeting with as many people as possible who are members of subentities. full meeting with as many people as possible who are members of subentities.
Thanks Dag. Thanks Dag. Any questions for the discussion? Any questions for the discussion? Okay. Okay. Now with no further matters before committee, I will adjourn. Now with no further matters before committee, I will adjourn.
We're slightly delayed as we try and gather a forum together. We are, um, we're gonna, we're gonna track Mark down. You ready to begin? Okay, roll. Mendoza?
Here.
Broughton?
Here.
Chen?
Here.
Dylan? Ron? Stolling?
Here.
Stangreber? Okay, we, um, I'm gonna forego the chair's report and ask if anyone wants to move the item out of consent. It's listed. Okay. Nobody's moving the item of consent. It's being accepted. We'll move to item 3A business regarding the first quarter financial statements. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
I forgot to ask for public comment. Is there anyone, any member of the public either present or on the phone who might make public comment? Erin, go ahead, John. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, I'll make a very brief presentation just on the first quarter financial reports for 2019. And just for, for the background for the committee required as part of the board book, we, the Office of Finance is responsible for preparing the report. The report actually includes three items this quarter. Financial statements for this, for the quarter ending March 31st. We also have the investment report, again, as of March 31st. And then the client security fund report that shows activities during the first quarter of 2019. With that, just to provide a few highlights on the financial statements. Overall, a decline both in assets and liabilities from the prior quarter. Assets at 309 million and liabilities at 113 million. Declines in both of those areas. Operating revenues when compared to budget are a little better for the first quarter compared to the budget. 1.5% better when you look at the actual revenues versus budget. And then operating expenses are actually less than budget. And so 12% under what our budget is for expenses. This is just the table that is actually in the report that just shows that those numbers. This is your balance sheet to show how assets, liabilities, and net position have changed. Overall, net position has improved by 1.6%. But again, this is just the first quarter, not the year end numbers. Just to show you revenues, operating revenues overall are higher, as I mentioned earlier, 1.5%. Certainly, when you look at expenses, you look at the general areas. And just to highlight some of the, the changes G and A, those were for adjustments related to our cost allocation where our budgeted allocation was higher than the actual. Quickly, investments for the State Bar are investments. Market value is 158 million when you compare it to 2018. Actually, the rate of return has increased, as everyone knows rates have increased since last year during the first quarter. Earnings, almost 100,000 higher than it was in the prior year based on a higher balance and also just rate increases. I identify the rate increase that the state is paying. You can see almost 100 basis points higher than the prior year. And again, highly raised securities, highly restricted by the government code, and currently completely in compliance with the board's policy. This is just a summary to show you what the book value is versus market value again, 158.7 million dollars. And the client security fund, just some highlights here. During the first quarter, 200 new applications, 42 million was filed. Applications that were processed, 312. Look at the total pending, 2779, approximately 5.8 million. The, the big change is just the reduction in what we would anticipate as far as the liabilities from last year. And if you remember, last year, we actually had some, a larger amount of CSF payments out. The budget was increased almost $3 million last year. So that number, as far as outstanding amounts, declined. In the packet that I provided, there was actually five attachments. I won't go into detail on those, but if there's any questions, I'd certainly answer those. But these are the standard reports on CSF that we provide every quarter. And then just here are the, really the highlights that we include in the report. Again, total new applications, 200. This is a decline from the prior 2018 quarter one. Process, of course, a little less. Paid, paid amounts as far as percentage and dollar amounts, little less. And if you look down at really the two numbers at the bottom, the estimated liability has declined, and then the net asset available to pay claims has also declined. And with that, there is a res, a recommendation and a resolution for the board and the committee. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Yeah, any discussion questions, motion? Motion was moved by Mark Broughton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second about the installings. Any objection to substituting the roll call? No objection. Motion's passed. Second item, it regards enterprise resource planning system budget amendment. State is agreeing on that. Keep setting on that. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Steve Maitor, Chief Administrative Officer. This item requests a $305,000 budget amendment and related contract approvals for the Oracle Fusion project. This is the strategic plan project to update our enterprise resource planning system from the old J.D. Edwards system to the new Oracle Fusion system. The ERP system manages finance, procurement, and HR functions. Project launched in February. We plan to go live by year end. There are three components to this budget amendment. First is a scope addition. We plan to add the goal management module to the project, this, to the HR portion of the, of the new system. This is a module for which we have already secured pricing in case we wanted to implement it at some point in the future. But with the bar's increasing emphasis on performance metrics and accountability at both the individual and organizational level, we feel like it would be a good idea to implement it now with the initial project implementation. The second portion is a scope change. We would be changing the recruiting module within the HR portion. The original recruiting solution proposed by Oracle was a standalone system called Taleo, which Oracle had acquired several years ago. Oracle subsequently released its own native solution, uh, which is fully integrated with the Fusion system. After reviewing both systems and having discussions with our implementer and with Oracle, the project team believes that there are significant advantages to using the native solution. Together, these two changes require a $64,000 contract amendment with Sierra Seater, our Oracle system implementer. Finally, there is a $234,000 contract for outside services with a company called Solution Boost to handle the data conversion and system interface with other, with other internal and external systems. This external resource would replace an internal IT staff resource who was a J.D. Edwards expert. This resource resigned from the bar unexpectedly. So the outside contract with a firm that has a significant expertise in J.D. Edwards will allow us to keep the project moving and have this important function completed. This outside contract will be partially offset by salary savings from that IT position, which will remain unfilled for the remainder of the year. The rest is all detailed in the item. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Any questions, discussion, or a motion?
Say your motion.
Brandon moves the recommendation. Second?
This is Hyland. I had a question as to how this intersects with what the state auditor concluded in their report. Did they take a look at this ERP line item and conclude something?
Yes.
Let's remember what, I just remember them calling this out as something they thought, you know, wouldn't need to be done.
Um.
Or am I wrong?
You are wrong.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, the, uh, this, this was included already in the 2019 budget. It was part of the auditor's review, and there is, there is full support for it.
Okay, good.
I still need a second. Okay, great. Thank you. Got a motion, second? Any objection to substituting the roll call on this? Ring that, it passes. Next item is C, review of metrics for office of the Finance and Planning Committee purview, and, and over Leah?
Yes, so similar to the other agenda items for today. Here, we're going to focus on those metrics or performance targets. We're not men. We're not men. We're going to begin with sort of human resources related targets. The first one, very important, this is timeliness of our performance evaluations. As you can see from the data here, although our target is 100% timeliness, we only achieved 57.5%. So the, the issues I've outlined in the report relate to, I think, a, an important cultural change that needs to take place in this organization, which has to do with the fact that historically, performance evaluations have not been done at all or have been done on a very delayed basis by many of our management staff. This is an issue that I see as being critically important because it relates not just to the specific act of completing the performance evaluation, but I think to the underlying nature of the relationship between the employee and his supervisor, the frequency of the communication contact, and the feedback regarding performance. So this is something that I personally have taken a great deal of, I paid close attention to it, increasing attention to it, asking for additional reports from the Office of Human Resources so that I can identify performance evaluations that are delayed, working with the chiefs to address those issues for all of the executive staff and those who are responsible for completing performance evaluations. The efforts made heretofore have not been sufficient, as you can see from the results achieved. And so we are talking at the leadership team level about something that I think is a bit more draconian of an approach, but may be necessary, which would be including performance on this metric in the evaluations of all staff who are required to perform or complete performance evaluations and having that ultimately tied to the provision of salary increases for those staff. So that's something we're discussing at the leadership team level. But certainly, we don't have a quick fix for you on this now. It is listed as a human resources metric, but I would note that this really is not a performance indicator for human resources. Their responsibility does lie with providing timely information to those of us who are required to complete evaluations so that we know when we're required to complete them and when we're delayed. But this is really an organizational line problem and responsibility.
Does anyone explain what the problems must be, why they're not getting them done? Are they like bunched into groups with groups all those ones? Or is there some other, has anyone explained to you whether to move them?
To, to be fair, I, I think people are working really hard, and we all have a lot of work to do. But that being said, I think it is culture. What you hear is, I don't have time. But I, I do think that's a cultural, uh, reality here at the bar that we've accepted decisions being made that when you have limited time, you choose to put evaluations on the platform. So it's something that needs to change. The next performance metric has to do with satisfaction with training. We have implemented much more robust employee training and professional development opportunities here at the State Bar through the Office of Human Resources. We had a target for a 90% of trained participants to report high levels of satisfaction with that training. As of quarter one, we achieved 77%. It's not particularly low, but we're not meeting that identified performance target. I did note in the report that we don't actually have a specific question that ties exactly to this metric. So we will be changing the question in the performance evaluating, the value, training evaluation form, which will allow us to better determine whether or not we're meeting the metric. The next one, the narrative dropped out of the agenda item. So this is metric F2, standing for finance. Reduce the number of billing-related phone calls from attorneys to our resource center, to that call center that we were talking about with the programs committee. You can see we have a goal of reducing the calls, and instead we have an increase. But there's some important sort of explanatory information there. I will note that last year was a particularly challenging year for billing, licensee billing. Some of you may recall, there were a number of issues, duplicate payments being one of them. We had many, many calls to the resource center. So last year, during quarter one, we had 19,000 calls to the resource center. This year, 2019, we only had 9,000 calls. So our rate of calls dropped in half. We believe that the vast majority of those 19,000 calls were people complaining about billing issues last year. But we also believe that out of frustration, they did not wait to get all the way through the menu and indicate they had a billing issue, but instead hit zero to get to a live person right away. So we weren't able to identify that all 19,000 of those calls last year were related to billing issues. So the data we do have, again, not provided in your report, is last year we had 4,702 identified billing-related calls during the first quarter. This year, we had 4,927. But again, given the overall context of a 100% decrease in the total number of calls, in our view that most of the calls last year were in fact billing-related calls, I think this indicator is a bit flawed or should be understood in that context. So overall, a significant improvement in billing, even though the metric as it stands does not necessarily reflect that. The next finance metric has to do with budget projections. Looking at John. This was a significant issue certainly for me during this first quarter. And we did not receive any projections until the finalization of the agenda items that have been presented to F and P today. As you just approved, the upgrade to our Oracle financial system, or Oracle Enterprise system, should result in significant improvements in the turnaround time or the production of these types of reports, but delayed for the first quarter nonetheless. The next metric here where we didn't meet our performance target, I consider this insignificant. Lastly, with respect to the Office of Information Technology Service request, again, did not meet our performance target. This is an internal performance metric. Having the metric did illustrate a problem with our existing process for closing out tickets. Turns out that we had many tickets in our system that have in fact been worked but not closed. So now that we're reporting on this, there is some motivation to close the tickets. So that's where we are with these under the Finance and Planning Committee purview. Questions or comments?
I'll just comment generally that for all the committees that are doing this, I think it's, did a good job identifying them and explaining them. And I think it's awesome that the board is engaging in oversight on these issues and they're not just being set up and ignored. They're meaningful. So thank you very much for, for presenting it to us.
The next item is the reviewing the selected strategic plan objectives. I'm gonna have, turn this over to Steve.
We will be making periodic, uh, Steve Maitor, Chief Administrative Officer. We will be making periodic updates to this committee about strategic plan objectives that fall under the committee's purview. This is a brief update on one objective around employee engagement that has not yet progressed as far as we had hoped. That is Goal Three, Objective B, improving staff morale and career satisfaction. You may recall this was a subject of a panel discussion at the 2018 board planning meeting. There have been many activities and initiatives going on in support of employee engagement in the, the employee engagement objectives, particularly in the last year and a half. But also going back further, they are noted in detail in the agenda item memo, but just briefly. In 2017, we added for the first time a full-time resource in HR devoted to training with expertise in training. During that year, we dramatically expanded our training opportunities and also created a new and much more comprehensive and robust training program for supervisors and managers. We instituted that year as well a peer recognition awards ceremony that included with our year-end employee recognition and service awards event, and that was very enthusiastically received. In 2018, we tried rebranding training and development to something we were calling talent engagement and development in order to highlight our commitment to engaging and developing our staff. This included much more targeted career development courses and a lot more one-on-one career counseling. In the last 12 months, 65 employees have participated in those types of career development courses and about 26 have had formal career counseling. Very significantly, we launched a new training and development assignment program. This is a program which allows employees to be on loan to a new office or just for a new assignment for a period of up to six months in order to broaden their work experience and deepen their skills. In the last 12 months, we have 14 completed T and D assignments and seven are currently in progress. Additionally, we've conducted a number of employee surveys and focus groups to gather more information about areas of concern, including employee recognition, performance accountability, and career development. And finally, about four weeks ago, we launched a new telecommuting program that we're all very excited about. As of today, 38 people are already signed up and set up, ready to go for telecommuting. Just this week, 58 new applications were received, almost all of them from the Office of Chief Trial Counsel. Those are all being reviewed and processed right now. So we are hoping that the new telecommuting program will make a pretty significant positive impact on quality of life, which hopefully will also help with morale and with recruitment and retention. So along with the progress we've made, there have been challenges to moving things forward as, as much as we had hoped. First, we have been restructuring the Office of Human Resources over the past year and a half. That is very worthy investment, which is going to be paying dividends. But in the meantime, we have had somewhat limited resources that have been applying on many important HR-related areas of focus in addition to the employee engagement initiatives. And another is that the, you know, what I put in the memo, the secret sauce of morale and career satisfaction does not have an exact recipe. I've noted in the memo that the staff surveying results demonstrate this. There were, for example, very, very positive results in, on many questions that relate to morale and career satisfaction, just a few examples. 96% of employees agree that they understand how their work supports key goals of the bar. 88% agreed they're informed about important events and activities happening at the bar. 88% agreed they're supported by their manager and supervisor. 80% agree that the bar allows flexibility and allows them to maintain an appropriate work-life balance. And even 78% agreed they have access to training and professional development for their career goals. At the same time, the survey does indicate there is, is work to do. Only 52% agree that excellent performance is recognized. And only 46% agree that there is a clear path for career advancement, despite the fact that 78% they have access to training and development to advance their career goals. So there are many additional efforts that are already underway or that are planned to be implemented the rest of this year to further these goals. These include a deeper analysis of issues impacting retention, particularly around certain key classifications where retention has been a challenge. We plan to more clearly define promotional criteria between certain closely related classifications, such as attorney and senior attorney, in order to hopefully simplify the promotional path. We will be interview, implementing, we have recently implemented stay interviews, which are interviews at various points in a new hire's tenure to sort of check in with them about what is working and, and what's not. We are always looking for additional opportunities for public and individual recognition of employee accomplishments. We do plan to expand the One State Bar new employee orientation to all employees so that there's a, a greater sense of, of understanding of how everyone's work fits into, into the bigger picture. And there is more work to be done around supervisor and manager training, around both their technical skills and in particular around softer skills, interpersonal skills. So this is really a high priority for Leah, for the chiefs, and for office directors. We talk about it very regularly at our, at our meetings, and we are putting in as much planning and effort as possible to, to really move these efforts forward.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Steve? I'll answer. This was just reported, I'm so.
This is Hyland. Just one question on the item about excellent performance being recognized at the State Bar. Do you have a sense for whether that is being driven by, you know, the sort of softer recognition of, you know, are kudos emails going around or events or awards or that type of thing? Or is it compensation driven? Is there a way to tease that out?
I mean, it is a little bit hard to, to tease that out, but I think there is, there is a, there is a feeling among some that there is not necessarily as much of an incentive to, to perform at. that there is not necessarily as much of an incentive to perform at your maximum because of people are, the level of recognition certainly financially is the same. And there is a view that, you know, not listed on here, that underperforming employees are not held accountable. So that creates a certain sense of unfairness. We think there has been a tremendous amount of effort put into that to hold people accountable at all levels of the organization. But that doesn't always, many of those actions that have happened to really address those issues are not necessarily public. So people don't necessarily realize that we are in fact holding people accountable more and more and at the same time trying to find ways to recognize those who are doing a better job. So it is a mixed bag.
Okay. I will say, Highland, that one, we did solicit ideas from different groups of staff on this topic and many were monetary. But there were others that were not. And so I think that's where we have seen some movement. For example, implementing telecommuting, which it's shocking that we're just doing that in two thousand and nineteen, but we are. But that's kind of an example of how to reward folks. Right, okay. Any other discussions?
Quickly, were they asked to expand a little bit on their answers to give you some ideas? For example, I didn't say this one, but that everybody at the state bars held to the same standard of performance was pretty low. Did they give you any ideas as to specifics on that?
There were, subsequent to the actual survey, we did conduct or we facilitated employee-led focus groups to delve deeper into a lot of these issues. So there is, we do have quite a bit now of data and information or at least opinion about these various things. So there is a lot more to sort through in that area, yes.
Every time I'm about to adjourn, somebody has a question, so. Last chance. Okay, we're adjourned.
Yeah, I know.
We have a great question.
Open session and then immediately go into closed to discuss one twenty-two line cases. At ten, we can call the roll, please.
Brock?
Here.
Dylan?
Here.
Lee?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Here.
Sallet?
Here.
Stollers?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum? Yes, all right, thank you. So we are going to turn to the closed session agenda and pursuant to Government Code Session 11126 subdivision C2, we will be in closed session.
So we can return to OCTC as a basis for the conflict that originated in case Tommy was in, so we can return to case OCTC. Coming down to the bottom line, so stated, there's been cases in the state bar, personally, starting to, we have fifty-nine active investigations. The employees were seconded review actually, sixty-one to two, seconded cases. That's now seven-five cases that happened on March fourteenth. So again, that's a million reduction in our case load. All of those cases, there was seventy-nine, forty-two counts backlog, which is a very large package. But I think we'll see the, the, the backlog cases in the last two months. So again, a very good call. Since we will last together, I think we'll begin. I met with the acting chief of, there was a ranking of attorney members of our office, together with general counsel, assistant general counsel, and the rat coaches at the state bar. Obviously, we have a very dynamic and forward-thinking session of the law. It would be for that meeting, I just want to cover some of the topics that we covered because there are some things that were fully decided to be made by the committee or certified by the trustees. And I want you to know the laws of those things. We just got the chief counsel's exercise for twenty-two-year-old conflict categories in fact, as OCTC is cited. Mars over twenty-two-year-old cases separate conflicts by letting forward acting, chief counsel counsel, all assistance support. As a basic, you know, that to be simple, our sale of five is to consider revision for rules that limit the payment order to recent professional conflicts, OCTC only, and all of OCTC is current, and I have the conflict rule there. If so, for that, I would have a lighter attention to the over solution case decision back in two thousand and six. It was said, uh, over seeing, the refusal of office, and the current look at the academy office. Have, 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 and not to support the attorneys in the office, which is sweet enough. And I believe the general counsel's office has formulated, uh, the code amendments to the twenty-two-year-old conflict provisions consistent with the lightest of, now, so this pressure, refusal based on conflict, the OCTC should rarely be involved in like the conflict with the chief counsel, herself, herself, setting himself. And instead, attorneys of conflict should be more screen from that part. And I'll support that maybe valuable to the overall one point one zero eight to, after being screened into the first time to also be sufficiently recognized. Now, obviously, that's something with four or two children's names, so it's not something with, uh, sure. Moving into the issue of overreacting, uh, just, uh, I was wondering, is the other thing here, if you might explain to us what you're going to ask?
So we certainly, uh, what we were talking about, bringing it up at the next July, we said, yes, we'd like to do that. Because I think, I think the case was, it's, uh, reduced twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Yeah, well, we have those all to be approved, you know, out of certain conflicts. We're talking about, why, why do we go to source? We've been playing around with it. The overacting, chief counsel, has seen illicit all of the costs of the deputy district attorney personnel and public defenders, and apparently other Northern California prosecutors and defense attorneys. I know that only because I have cases for San Francisco and that account, you're a family. And I know I did reasons outside of the common cause of the case. As attorneys, until we had recent, even two-year professional relationships, my understanding is that two-year rule of base is not additional fact for judges. Doing some basic manning or review of any complaint is about one of those attorneys pursuant to, you know, five of the two-year. After our discussions, law review is less than reduced by a box of two hundred and thirty. So, I will leave, but it is, tell it may be ratified in the same time, this is the cut down, like, that there is a chance of, gonna give way back whatever form of cases, that explain why we can send three years of that. That's it, or to the other cases I questioned, a lot of centers have now, it's not that, so, that's where we are. After our discussion, the media, the discussion has since continued, the chief counsel, which is law, have seen as well, said, law and office screen is the law, for example, this remaining, remainder of this type of conflict cannot be accomplished without a change of rule. Although it's open discussion, under law conflicts, it will be updated by case study. I accept that assertion, that they've got, uh, a lot of doubt, but what it leaves me to believe, and it must be the law, the law on place of OCT, which would prohibit or would prohibit screening would not be an effective thing. That's all I love about that point, is you can't, so, I have something to ask you to present, is whether that is the law of the office, is something that should be considered, and why it exists in conflict of that clause, which can't be eliminated or mitigated by surrender, for instance. So, we just discussed, again, at this point, it's all we've got, is the scope of the conflict, and, you know, the overall, the end of personal law, and as I said, one of the aspects of that is to cut down on the time period of how far the issue goes back, I mean, as a now, it is more often way for compromise of four or two years. So, we have, for example, all the periods, that should eliminate the basis of those conflicts. And then, if I can, intervention exemption, whether screening the law, it's something that would be applied, with your other, the chief counsel. We discussed this latest issues, what about your initiative, the LS, maybe we're not, but, I know we're about the case, the perjury scene from OCTC, which is a complaint against OCTC in terms, and obviously, not a very clear, I don't have any concern with that. But the concept of the complaints themselves, don't really seem to disprove their violation, and what they all write, all customer, consumer complaints, that's the reason. In other words, you didn't get away, complaint threat, we closed out the case, I received the place, the attorney or the best year group, for example, or you didn't call me back, or whatever. And, part of my concern is, is not, in those cases, for you to close out, I have to review by letter, explain why, and play with this very violation, some people, some would like to agree with me, some neither. But my, part of my concern is that, the customer, the consumer, the rights part of being addressed, because I say that, I'm saying, no, let's just very violation, but nobody's really seeking to complain with us about their issue with the office, salary with how the office treated them. It's not my role, in a sense, to, that was, I don't think it is to tell them, you know, the way the office, chief counsel, no problem, in a sense, although we have a reach to win those cases coming, I will, in some fashion, or, if you have a counsel, correct, advise of, now, the late office, in my view, as a customer, to play give, and address it, play with us, on that basis, separate the law from the word, so we discuss that. And then, again, we've discussed a lot of retreat, aspects that I've talked about before, and, we've discussed a lot of rules. In terms of, uh, special deputy file counsel, this rate of issues, what we've discussed is about all changes for SEDC, right, law, our options, and, and, on that basis, areas that require, or these desires, one of the goal, obviously, is to achieve more diversity in our, our board SEDC, we are largely a group of full agreement, and I'd like to see, I'd like to see diversity, and one of the ways to do that is to, perhaps, follow, that's one way to say it, the rapist's sort of desire, first desire, for assistance, that makes experience, with, by our younger lawyers, just so we have, and then, we can identify ways to bring them along, in the program. We have explored ideas, the other law firms, for what we're, younger lawyers to work on during SEDC, some RSEs, while he's on active, that's, that's pretty wild. We, we discussed some possibility of six women, six women career, and that day, when we were with Paul Hastings' office, the co-chair, and it sounds out, now, is a trip out, thinking that was, uh, something we wanted to pursue at this time, but, any member of the committee has identified, pretty, uh, firmly controls, for that type of thing now to be appreciated, and certainly, follow up. Can I answer any questions, could, could, and it's, and it's, and it's, and it's, and it's, 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 it's basically where, uh, a firm to get experience, to have experience from their returns, will take it, or, under the direct issue of partner, and have the younger associates who adopt that kind of work, that's where we would be, is the, the problem is able to involve a lot. So, the idea here would be, if you got a manager, you got a supervisor, partner, qualifications, you have three or four associates under his supervision, taking our pieces, and have them work up. And, yeah, you can be certain, I feel, for, for, yeah, in my mind, I was told, I did with, um, um, see, we discussed, how we rate, whether raising the rate for court attorneys, some former judges that, I mean, so far, I think, I guess I get a lot of the, the possibility of attorneys on board, so, we, that's, that's, seem to be an issue, that, and that's part of the laws, because, of the nature of the law, it's, all the service needs, I call it, at the moment, at least. I don't know the raising the rates a lot different, for example, with many Gs, it's been a trap in USETCs. I heard no one, no one has ever spent their life on a control period, and now, five, six, most, no one's complained about the rate that you have, but, some of the SED don't bill at all, so, that's totally possible. So, and that's something we want to experiment, but that's why it would be, but I don't know that upping the rate, with the possibility of, of, certainly, senior rate, three hundred, senior rate, five hundred dollars per hour, and, uh, certainly, we don't want that to be, you know, or, or, yet.
Part of the main, I think, we've heard, and, 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 sometimes, it's, it may or be very recent, it was, it was, it was, you know, everybody has to go, well, certainly, you can, right, it's not, it's, 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 you know, so, I think, it's, it's, we, we have, yeah, I agree, you got it around, close, that's what it, you would, and when you say you have five, three, yeah, or those, what you're, um, and I think, we should be aware that, SEDCs have now been required to file the Form 700, that DTC, saving the economic difference, and, I do that, for, for, with the law, so, I, I try to assist all of the people complaining that, there was some, that's, I don't know, I think, a lot of people have heard, well, I should be a little, I thought, thirty-five years, the same way, so, you know, I do my sleep, but, to that, it was kind of a new, challenging thing, for the law, I got over that, but that's an issue I'll come to, it's just a, just a, the last issue I have, justice for the SEDCs, uh, in the monitor, I noted, I noted there, with W16, SEDC has been lost, or, or, retired, or, like, that was down for twenty, the report before that, so, the bill was another year. I know that was a federal state of affairs, I hope, the committee had, that, of the sixteen, we had seven had cases, or, fifteen were signed, initial cases, so, it's only, yeah, a lot of lawyers, who was on the basis too, we had one SED, that SED, uh, was one case that must be reassigned, and, and, uh, the SEDC, we set that off, and, I know that, as they had a stated in the prior report, a number of claims, a good number of lawsuits, that few people, in the last SEDs, for that, so, through their in recruitment efforts, we've added six new SEDs to the program, two were reported, two were already, and we retain three SEDCs by relying on expanded powers, about that, that's a rule, we'll add twenty-two to the very office, uh, in terms of, uh, training, on April ten, OCTC, a senior deputy, Joe, uh, oh, hey, he's, my new team, he's, yeah, yes, and, all ones investigators, who they presented about five hours, who's clearly qualified, law degree, and, also, office of cure. We have, we played off two new SEDCs at that, one was revoked, up here with this office, one was on, on there, and, plus, six of the SEDs, so, I think, very people putting that back, uh, who's got a very good deal, and, that ring was, uh, recorded, and we now have that available, so, we use that as a, as a sense of, very, flexible way of creating the new SEDC, and what we focus on, is not the contractual rules of the state law, and the rules for the, the state law, for procedures, because of all of our legislative SEDs, and so, that's what we focus on, and, and, these various SEDs, not the current guy, so, we now have that, the key, and so, it's, and, we can spread that around, y'all, so, we've got a whole new, set of materials, a little binder, in the, um, right, for each, five new SEDCs, and we'll get that all, uh, within the next month or so, and then, everybody has to, we'll, 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 we won't have to train for those new SEDs, if we come, we must, like, all the time, Joe, have that, that's what we pull, to, to, and this is significant. We have gotten through the Form 700 filing, issue, it had, we had a major issue, like, um, three very senior SEDCs, probably, most extredest, will not make the requirement of, as of now, they are, they have not signed a new contract, so, uh, as it turned out, the raising issue caused by the SEDCs, was always around, is always part of the conflict of deciding to talk down, not for doesn't fall, just because they success, they, you were, you were removed, so, we have these three SEDCs, I sold it with them, and they all said, if, if category closure, fire review, and they're only requiring closure in category thirteen, which is, fire review is the last twelve months, they would rejoin program, and they, they tolerate that, but, as more tolerant, maybe, to provide that kind of disclosure. And, as you said, had, had raised it, and, really, it's, uh, and that is, that serious issue, and that is, as, well, the SEDCs now have disclosed their internal files, in the papers, and they might, might be made into your, of, of, form, several disclosure, as, uh, senior, uh, senior, or, uh, that, 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 uh,
Is there anyone who would like to present public comment? Seeing no one, attempt to be able to help online active. Is there anyone on the telephone who would like to present public comment? Hearing no one, we will proceed next to the oral report. And I know the committee will be sorely disappointed, but I'm going to dispense with that today. I have nothing important to share with you. So we're going to move along, uh, right along then to the consent agenda. Uh, there's one item on the consent agenda, proposed changes to state bar rules regarding confidentiality. Is there anyone who would like to take that item off the consent calendar for discussion? Seeing no requests, item two A is deemed approved. And we will next move to our business agenda and begin with item two A, which, uh, involves appropriate amendments to the standards for, uh, attorney sanctions for professional misconduct. And Mr. Moad is going to present that to us.
Thank you. I don't have a large number of comments. This board has seen, uh, these proposals with one minor, uh, change previously at the January meeting, and it was out to public comment. We've got no additional public comments during that comment period, uh, where most of these items were sent out for public comment a second time, and one item was sent out for public comment the first time. However, during that public comment period, we continued to engage with our discipline system partners, the State Bar Court and the Association of Discipline Defense Council, uh, and continued to discuss issues of mutual concern. Uh, our proposal, while we, is in fact ours, it is the position of O C T C that these, uh, standards be adopted in their current form, uh, however, significant consideration was given to both the, the State Bar Court and A D D C's thoughts.
Cherry Golday has joined the conference.
Uh, after all the, the dust settles and the discussion went on, uh, in essence, I think that we all understand that, uh, there may still be some issues that could potentially be addressed with the standards. However, that the limited scope of our, uh, authorization to handle these items based on a change to the rules of professional conduct, uh, didn't necessarily authorize additional changes. So that's why we left them, uh, where they are. The one, uh, change that has occurred since it, uh, since this board saw it previously, uh, and since it went out to public comment is in item, excuse me, in standard, uh, two point one five, which is the red line version, or in this case, the green line version is on page twelve. Uh, there is a green underline of, uh, brief, uh, clause there that we have added based on our discussions, uh, with the State Bar Court and the A D D C. And it is simply, uh, I believe, it's not a substantial change, as is, uh, would require additional public comment period under rule one point one zero, uh, because it is simply restating, uh, the statute, uh, and it was, in my opinion, subsumed in the condition of a felony, because it is only with the, uh, statute, which explicitly states the same language, that would, that this standard would come into play. Uh, but I wanted to draw your attention to that in case anybody else felt differently.
Has joined the conference.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, for those on the phone, if you could please use your mute button so we can hear background noise, we would appreciate it. Uh, all right, members of the committee, any discussion on item three A? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any objection to substituting the roll call? Hearing no objection, item three A is approved. Uh, I'm going to take, uh, next up, an item out of order. I'm going to take item two F, because Steve's going to report on that as well. Uh, this is the computational law logic model. Thank you.
So as this committee is well aware, over the last two years, we have drastically increased our engagement with the public, whether that is improved outreach, um, through reaching out to people in detention centers, issuing fraud alerts, uh, for immigration-related and other legal fraud, uh, areas, or press releases on N A U P L and other discipline matters. In addition to that, we have, uh, released the online complaint portal as of October of last year. Uh, we have received a number of complaints through that online portal with no corresponding decrease in paper complaints or mailed in complaints. And that has resulted in a significant increase in the number of complaints that we have received. For example, the number of complaints we received last year was fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-three. In the first four and a half months of this year, we've received six thousand two hundred and ninety complaints, which if you, uh, extrapolate that out to twelve months, it works out to sixteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-three complaints. So we're looking at about an eight hundred, uh, complaint increase over last year, uh, just from this. Of course, that's if the, uh, use of the portal remains flat or consistent with the first four months. And frankly, I expect that we'll continue to move up as more people learn about it and we continue our, our enhanced engagement with the public. We have had a slight increase in staffing, uh, and by reallocating resources to the discipline system as it's a priority for the bar. Uh, but of course, the lack of a fee increase over the last twenty years has prevented us from truly expanding service in order to, uh, cope with this increase. So we've been looking for solutions, and one of the solutions that we've been looking through is really a, a task, if you will, an experiment, and that is the computational law. And computational law is a system of using artificial intelligence or machine learning to automate legal reasoning. And it operates by essentially distilling a decision-making process into basic rules such that a machine, uh, can learn to make a recommendation as to a likely, likely outcome of a legal dispute. We have, uh, made a contract with MITRE, which is a not-for-profit company that operates several federally funded research and development centers. In the computational law area, they have a, a specific section entitled the Judiciary Engineering and Modernization Center. Uh, and they have partnered with Stanford University Law Center School and Michigan State University College of Law. And that project is, uh, sponsored by the federal judiciary. For purposes of our project, uh, the focus of the project is to determine if machine learning can provide triage and decision support for the high-volume intake decisions that we make, essentially of whether to close a complaint or whether it should be forwarded on to investigations. So as part of that, we need to determine the factors that influence the intake decision and then determine if we can readily reduce that to a set of rules that can be applied through the machine learning, uh, into a sort of decision tree, if you will. The timeframe for this experiment is six months, uh, if everything goes smoothly. Uh, and one of those things that needs to go smoothly, bless you, is the data export from our new case management system. So we're currently working on that, and Hatem is, uh, very involved with that or will be shortly. Uh, the expected outcome of this project is that at the conclusion, they will provide us with a report on their findings, including sample code that we can then repurpose, uh, for our internal use for this purpose, uh, and opinion of whether the application of machine learning to this decision is viable, and a description of what resources would be necessary in order to implement that. So as far as next steps, we have planned ongoing meetings with MITRE to define all the data that they would require in order to set up these rules and determine what rules and what data is required for them to, uh, make that decision tree, if you will. We've also enlisted a former O C T C employee who spent many years in our intake unit to assist with explaining the decision process. And in fact, their goal is that they will, is that she will sit with them, uh, virtually and talk through the decision-making process on various complaints, so they can hear that decision process as we're going through it, and they can then feed that into that decision tree. Uh, and as I mentioned, we also need to provide MITRE access to a collection of case record decision pairs, which is in essence, cases in which we have made a decision to either close it or move it forward to investigation, so that they can then evaluate what the criteria was with the assistance of our, uh, former employee, uh, as to what's important there. Now, this is the part where, where it gets a little pie in the sky, so bear with me for just a moment. But assuming that all of this, uh, goes well, uh, and, and I'm not making any promises here on results or timing, but if it does go well in the future, I'm envisioning that in lieu of the, the complaint portal, for example, we could have an interactive law bot, if you will, that, uh, will help guide the public in submitting their complaints online. That would be, in essence, the TurboTax of the State Bar complaint system. And that would help ensure that we have all the relevant information by asking them questions about additional factual scenarios, having it read those answers, and then ask relevant follow-up questions. And it would also help ensure that any documentation that we would require would be submitted along with that complaint. And of course, the hope is that that would speed up processing of our investigations, because we would have all the information required. So that's a sort of a brief update on where we are with this project.
Okay, thank you. This is very interesting work. Uh, I believe this is an informational item only, so there's no actually requested of the board, but is there any discussion or questions from members?
I want to say none of them, but I thought Joanna, you might jump in, just there's such an interesting nexus with the work of our addled, what I call the technology task force. Um, it's sort of remarkable to see sort of concurrently the State Bar grappling with some of the issues and the opportunities that we are talking about in terms of that broader question of potential regulatory reform in this space.
Great, good. This is a very innovative project to look into here. Um, all right, so let me, uh, move back now to item three B, uh, review of metrics and latest on the deck session.
Yes. So similar to what we've done, uh, at, at other committees today, I'm going to talk about the metrics under RAB review, where we did not need established performance targets. The first one has to do with the lawyer assistance program transition, uh, plan, uh, as related to the board's action to, uh, directing a separation of the voluntary portion of the program. That, um, i- issue is on the board's agenda tomorrow. So this implemented transition plan was delayed, uh, because of the time that it's taken to get a recommendation to the board about the exact nature of that transition. The next metric where we did not meet our performance target has to do with the ethics hotline, uh, managed by the opposite professional competence. As I indicated in the report, I'm going to be asking OPC staff to revisit this metric, as I'm not sure, um, that we fully thought through the goal of the sixty forty ratio of, uh, returning to new callers and the ten percent variances. You can see for quarter one, we have seventy-five percent new callers, and I'm not sure that that's a, a bad outcome. So I think we need to look internally at the, um, value of that metric as it's currently constructed. Lastly, and this is the one that is a bit of a, a concern, is our metric related to the quality or the, um, evaluation of our online training content. This relates specifically to the new attorney M C L E. As you know, that's ten hours mandatory for new attorneys in an online modality. And this is really the State Bar's first sort of foray into this method of content delivery. But as you have heard, for example, with respect to the board training, and you will hear in many other areas, we are moving into this modality for training delivery. So I think it's important that we, uh, figure out how to do it right. Um, these, uh, scores are not terribly low, but it was interesting going through the comments in preparation for this meeting and seeing that, you know, there are some folks that certainly thought the content was too, um, general or basic, others that thought it was much too rigorous. So I think it's a challenge to try to strike the right balance, but we will continue, uh, to work in this area. And then, uh, lastly, I note in this, uh, report, as well as my, uh, executive director report for tomorrow's meeting, that we continue to not be able to provide RAB with reports on the discipline system performance. And this ties to issues, uh, that we are having with our Odyssey's management system. I'm assuming that Hatem will cover some of those in his update on C M S implementation. Just want to assure the committee that this is a, a very important issue for us as, you know, management staff here at the State Bar. We are putting a tremendous amount of mind and resource and energy into addressing the issues. Um, and I want to thank Joanna for her ongoing involvement in this work as well. Uh, recognizing that it's really not acceptable for the board to not have reports at this point in the year, and we hope to rectify that soon.
Good. Thank you, Leah. Next up is item three C, review of selected strategic plan objectives, and Melanie Morris, our interim chief trial counsel is going to present to us.
Um, I wanted to give you a brief update on strategic plan item, uh, goal two, objective H, which is to monitor improvements in the response to complaints regarding unauthorized practice of law through tracking and reporting on complaints received, investigation timelines, civil filings, and law enforcement referrals. Um, and while the item has been delayed, it's not that there have not been efforts and, um, thought on moving these forward. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about what we've been doing and what we plan to do. Um, first of all, regarding the tracking of reports and complaints we receive, that is something that we have been doing and that we've been able to do in over two thousand and eighteen. As reported in the annual discipline report, we received seven hundred and thirty-four complaints related to non-attorney unauthorized practice of law. In addition, also, uh, reported in the A D R, we had six civil filings in Superior Court to assume the jurisdiction of practices of non-attorney's invasion, yeah, the unauthorized practice of law. Uh, in terms of the number of law enforcement referrals, in two thousand and eighteen, we made four hundred and ninety-two referrals to law enforcement related to these cases. And while we do not yet have a formal policy in place in terms of timelines for investigations in these cases, for about eighteen months now, the, the specialized team that handles these cases has been with, working within the framework of our regular enforcement investigations, um, to actually move these cases forward to resolution. Remember that these cases do not actually fall within the statutory backlog. So what we are, uh, looking at is whether those timelines make sense for these kind of cases and whether or not they're realistic in our resources. So I wanted to focus for a moment on the, um, the referrals to law enforcement and following up on the outcomes of those. Um, so to give you a little bit of background, a couple of years ago, um, I know that members of the board were particularly concerned about the timing of our office making referrals to law enforcement in these cases, given the fact that, um, it's generally a year statute limitations on misdemeanor U P L cases. Um, and because we weren't doing the referrals until later on in the process, oftentimes by the time they were being done, that statute, um, was close to passing. So now what we've been doing is when the complaints come into our office, part of the, the read and assignment process is to make a recall to law enforcement. Um, so we're getting those out the door much earlier. The disadvantage of that is what law enforcement is getting from us then is really just the complaint, um, without any investigation from our office. And so what we've tried to do to find out what is actually happening to those complaints in the end is originally, originally, we had, um, appointed a, uh, T and D, um, employee. You heard earlier from Steve Mazer that the bar has been using T and D assignments, which is where an employee from another, uh, part of the bar comes on a temporary assignment to do a particular kind of work, to get exposure, um, to another kind of work, uh, to potentially promote, um, to other positions within the bar. And while we tried to do that, um, it didn't work out. We weren't able to, um, backfill the position that she was coming from. So, um, about four weeks ago, we started another T and D, and the goal really is for that person to follow up on the, uh, all of the referrals that we did in two thousand and eighteen by contacting those law enforcement agencies to find out what has happened with those cases. Um, and so we are still in the initial... And so we are still in the initial stages of doing that. The other thing that we wanted to do to try and flush this out in terms of what is happening to our referrals is that we have explored more efficient ways to actually make the referrals and to communicate with those agencies. So for example, feedback that we received from the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office was that instead of receiving our referrals by mail individually, what they wanted to see was that we provide them with a spreadsheet every other week, which we emailed to them, and it has basic information, including whether or not this is a repeat offender, information about the basics of the complaint, and contact information for our staff. There have been some other agencies where we provide the largest volume of complaints to that have requested something similar. So that has helped tremendously. The other thing we do is at the conclusion of our investigations, of all of our investigations, we do send a letter to the law enforcement agency that we've made the referral to, letting them know what the result of our investigation was. In those cases where we are issuing cease and desist letters, we're letting them know that, and we are also providing them a copy of our investigation report so they at least have something to go on. In addition, as part of this item, as well as the strategic plan item related to partnering with law enforcement to coordinate a regional response to unauthorized practice of law, our NAUPL team supervisor and manager have now met with 24 district attorney's offices in the state to educate them, frankly, about non-attorneys engaging in the unauthorized practice of law, to talk about what we're going to put to the table as we work with them on these cases, and to talk some about why they might not actually be doing anything with the things that we are sending them to. It's really illuminated some challenges, I think, that law enforcement has. One is just understanding what the unauthorized practice of law is and at what point does someone cross the line into engaging in the practice of law. And so what we've done is a couple of things. One, some suggestions and requests. We've developed a trifold pamphlet that talks a bit about the unauthorized practice of law, and so that's something that they can use and they can provide to the citizens of their counties. And it will have the State Bar's logo as well as the individual county's logo on it. The other thing that we've done is we've offered to provide assistance to them as they're working through these cases, including to provide members of our office who can testify as expert witnesses if necessary as they are prosecuting these cases. You know, mostly what we hear from people is that they don't take action on these cases because they don't prioritize them. They prioritize what they consider to be more serious cases ahead of these. And in particular, if these are one-offs, or certainly if it's a person who doesn't have multiple complaints, or there's not a high dollar value on restitution, they're less likely to take those cases. So I will tell you that the results that we know of related to our initial efforts is that in most instances, they have taken no action on our referrals. On some that they have, we know about because the law enforcement agencies have interacted with us about them. So for example, one of the cases that we referred to law enforcement did result in a criminal prosecution. There were multiple victims, and there was a high dollar amount of restitution. In addition, one of our referrals resulted in the district attorney's office entering into a civil compromise with the actor, with the bad actor, to avoid criminal charges. And we know of two other cases where we've actually assumed jurisdiction over the non-attorney's practice where there are ongoing criminal investigations that have not yet resulted in charges. So as we continue in terms of our next steps, we will continue to follow up with the various agencies on the referrals that we haven't yet heard back from. We're also going to, in addition to targeting the district attorney's offices, we're going to target some of the city attorney's offices, who are perhaps more likely to be handling these cases and doing something similar with them in terms of education. We also will be considering the timelines for investigation resolution of cases to determine whether it makes sense to apply the same timelines to these kind of cases that we do in our regular enforcement investigations, or if something else is more appropriate, and discussing actually formalizing that by a policy directive or some kind of manual. So that's where we are with this, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Joanna.
Hi. Wondering, based on the feedback you received, would it matter if the statute of limitations was extended, or would these cases still be treated the same by law enforcement?
I'm not sure that it would matter, just because, again, they're looking, you know, they're looking for the bigger cases. And for them, these, you know, a lot of times, unless they're affecting multiple victims, they simply don't prioritize them, and I'm not sure that that has to do with statute of limitations.
Does the amount of investigation we're able to provide them and the time we're able to put into that matter to the ultimate prosecution, or does it really just come down to how many people are impacted, the dollar?
Well, I mean, I think it does have to do with how many people are impacted in the dollar amount. I, you know, I will tell you, in the case in which we referred it and there was actual criminal prosecution, we did a fair amount of work on it and turned over basically a victim list to them. And then they took it from there and actually followed up so that they could, they did additionally, you know, they can do the surreptitious recordings and search warrants and things like that, which they did to actually cultivate more evidence.
Can I, I'll pull you one thing. In my experience in criminal prosecution, many DA's offices have dedicated units for, for example, auto insurance fraud or workers' comp insurance fraud because there's specialized funding that goes to district attorney's offices that reserve resources for those types of cases. If, it may be valuable to increase the statute of limitations for UPL or potentially increase the penalty. However, I think that it's not necessarily a lack of interest on the part of the district attorney's offices. They've all been very pleased that we're coming out and reaching out to them. They're interested in helping the vulnerable victims that are taken advantage of in these situations. I think that the issue is that they're competing with homicides and sexual assaults and domestic violence in order to get those resources. If there was a separate source of funding that could be provided to district attorney's offices for this purpose, I would imagine that a great number of district attorney's offices would apply for those grants and submit and commit resources to prosecute those cases. And then, of course, they have to generally report to whatever agency provides those grants, back the numbers of prosecutions that they have, the number of convictions, and so on and so forth. So that's potentially one model that the legislature could choose to follow.
Well, one good thing about what we're doing is we're really collecting some strong data to show the number of referrals versus how many of them are actually prosecuted and how that could be remedied. I don't know if anyone realized what a problem it was and how it can't be addressed under the way things currently set up. So at least we're getting the data.
Brandon.
Yeah, just to kind of address something that Joanna said. I think generally in these UPL cases, you're going to have some sort of fraud, you know, fraud and inducement, and then a payment of these attorney fees that are probably going to be over the amount of $950. So now you're into felony territory, and that will get you up to about three or statute of limitations depending upon conduct. So I think it's more to what Steve was talking about is, you know, asking the legislator to perhaps set aside funds for prosecutors to be able to really go after these sort of bad actors. And I think that's a very worthwhile cause for us to take on.
So Brandon, are you suggesting that maybe for next year it be added as legislative priority to talk about?
Yeah, I would definitely push for that.
Ellen Thomas.
Question.
Yes, please.
Why would it have to wait until next year? We have a lobbyist on the counter now.
You read my mind. I think we should, they should be discussed, yeah.
I understand the bills have been introduced already, but they're either trailer bills and other stuff, I'm assuming. So can't be a lot of money that we're talking about. From what I hear, the legislators are okay with cash.
It sounds like even in larger counties, if there are just one or two dedicated positions for this, it would make a huge difference in the level of prosecution attention. All right, anything else? This is just informational, no action items before the board. All right, thank you, Melanie and Steve. Now, before I return to our business agenda, let me pause for a moment. I heard a couple of people join the public line after the call for public comment. Is there anyone on the line who wishes to provide public comment to the regulation of Hearing no requests, we'll move along to item 3D on our agenda, which Donna Kurskiewicz will present an update on the Office of Probation and the Alternative Discipline Program.
Thank you. And on the phone line today, we also have Teri Golday, the supervising attorney in the Office of Probation, and Michelle Harmon, the program supervisor for the lawyer assistance program. They will assist me in answering any questions that you all might have. This is just an informational update for you. I wanted to give you a little bit of information about where we're going with the Office of Probation and our lawyer assistance programs, alternative discipline program. We are currently in the early stages of planning for significant changes in how we conduct probation, as well as that part of the lawyer assistance program that's known as ADP or the alternative discipline program. So starting with probation, we've mentioned to you all this new direction at some very high level in prior presentations to the board, including at your January training and strategic plan update, Teri Golday from the Office of Probation talked a little bit about it. So currently, the way we operate probation at the State Bar, probation is a self-rehabilitative model. The goal is, the goal is not per se to assist the probationer or motivate the probationer through positive means to achieve success, but rather to monitor their compliance with the particular terms and conditions of probation that have been ordered by the court. Now, in some ways, this makes a lot of sense. These are lawyers, right? We need to have confidence that they can follow directions and rules, they can meet timelines without excuses, they understand reporting requirements and comply with them. This is in part the business of being a lawyer. But at your last meeting, you all looked at the recidivism statistics. And as you recall, the recidivism rates were extremely high. So this tells us that we need to find new, or at least new for us, ways to look at probation and look at how we are addressing those in our discipline system. So what are we doing? What are we looking to do? We have turned our attention to the model that has been adopted in the criminal court system and criminal probation system for quite some time now. Using evidence-based practices, we will be seeking, seeking to employ rehabilitation-focused case-level services. This is not a cookie cutter approach to probation. What, what this kind of rehabilitation-focused case-level services looks at is that not everybody needs the same level of attention to succeed. Some need very little, and some need a lot. Some will succeed, no matter how much attention we provide to them, and frankly, some will not succeed regardless of the level of attention and resources that we are able to provide through the probation process. So how do we do this? And again, looking at what the criminal justice system has employed, we would, our plan is to develop a risk and need assessment. We would look at the data we have and see what kind of circumstances in the past have suggested likelihood of success or reduced recidivism for particular probationers. The risk assessment will then guide us in the type and level of services that would be required to be provided to that probationer. So what do you do with that? So from the risk assessment, our probation case specialist would develop recommendations to the court for conditions of probation, and the court would receive these conditions and for their consideration in issuing their orders. And these would be individualized based on the results of that risk and needs assessment. So for example, right now, virtually all probationers are required to take the MPRE and to file quarterly reports. Maybe the risk assessment will show that probationer X has a low risk, and they have high likelihoods of successfully completing probation and not to recidivate. So maybe they don't need to take the MPRE. Maybe they don't need to file quarterly reports, but semi-annual reports would do. So this is the type of, you know, this is a sort of very superficial example of individualized case-level, individual-specific conditions of probation that we might look at. Now, when the criminal justice system first employed this evidence-based practice approach more than 20 years ago, the evidence and the evidence-based practice was necessarily somewhat limited, and we'll be faced with that same situation. We will use the data that we currently have, that we've collected in the past, and the experience that we have, that we have had with those who are on probation. We would need to refine the tools, certainly at the beginning annually, at the very least, we'd refine the tools annually as we develop more data and build a better risk or needs assessment. So additionally, as part of this risk and needs assessment that we would be doing, we'd be identifying substance use or mental health issues that the respondents or the probationers might have. As a result, we determined that it was appropriate to start thinking more broadly about, about not just incorporating these recommendations into the conditions of probation, but also to really think about transitioning from our current agency model to more treatment court or collaborative court kind of model. Again, sort of following the lead from the criminal justice system and the move that they have made to collaborative courts. We hope that this kind of model will help us to better identify and address substance use and mental health issues that underlie or contribute to misconduct. This also dovetails really nicely with the plan that you all are very well aware of, and we'll hear more about tomorrow, to focus the State Bar's lawyer assistance program on what we're sort of terming the mandatory cases, and to combine the expertise that we have in our lawyer assistance program and our Office of Probation. Again, I would note that we are in the very early stages of this. We have engaged a consultant with expertise in this area to develop a project plan. And before you tomorrow will be an item for the approval of a contract for management and implementation of that plan once it's completed. This effort will require substantial engagement with key stakeholders, probably most critically our State Bar court judges, who we will need to engage, engage with frequently to make sure that we're all moving in the same direction. Will also require engagement with OCTC and the Defense Bar. The expectation right now is from the start of the implementation phase, we could be looking at at least 10 months before we were able to implement this. I am happy to report that two of your colleagues right here sitting across from me have graciously agreed to serve as my informal advisors as this project moves forward. So we've got somebody from the criminal prosecution side and criminal defense side who have witnessed these types of collaborative courts and the probation system, the evidence-based practice system in, in operation, and will be able to provide feedback and direction as we move forward.
Great, thank you, Dawn. The consultants you mentioned, are they volunteers or contracted?
Excuse me?
The volunteers you mentioned, are they, the consultants, they're on our board?
Yes, so that would be Brandon and Mark are my informal advisors.
Thanks to you both. Great, any questions or discussion?
I don't know.
No, all right, thank you, Dawn.
Thank you.
Next, item 3E, tally an update on our case management system.
Teri Golday has left the conference. Has left the conference.
Hatem, Kailik Director for the Office of Research and Institutional Penability. Let me give you an update on the post-implementation of the Odyssey case management Let me give you an update on the post-implementation of the Odyssey Case Management System. As you're aware, we went live in early February, and we've had some issues that we have been working with Tyler on, the vendor. And we've been experiencing some delays in resolving some of these issues. One of them primarily is, Leah mentioned earlier, the inability for us to produce the metrics for the Discipline Committee. So over the last few months, we've been working very closely with the vendor. We've escalated a lot of the issues to senior management, and we've made some progress, although not as quickly or at a pace that we are satisfied with. Just yesterday, we held a steering committee meeting with CMS, and Joanna was present at that meeting as well. And we met with, we brought up the issues to Tyler's senior management, and we are going to be working with them over the next two weeks when we're going to schedule another steering committee to see if we're able to bring in some resources actually early on between now and then to help us address some of the issues.
Could you describe, like, what's the nature of the issues? Like, is it preventing you from using the system, or are you going to?
Yeah, I'm going to explain a little bit what the category is. But the issues are not preventing us from using the system. The issues are primarily, I can break them down into a couple of areas.
Has joined the conference.
You know, one is functionality. We've experiencing some defects in the product that are causing some inefficiencies in case processing, primarily case assignment and intake, where it could be automated, but it's not working as designed. So we're working very closely with the Tyler technical team to really diagnose what the issues are and hopefully get a resolution of that. Another issue, another area of concern that we have are the reports. We are still unable to have, there are several custom reports that have been part of this implementation that we don't have available yet in production. And we've been very unhappy with the pace at which the progress being made on these custom reports, and have expressed our concerns over and over and over to the vendor. We are going to get a resource on site the week of May 26 that will be dedicated, although the week of 26, they won't be on site, but they'll be 100% dedicated to working with us. And then they are going to be on site the week of June 10 to continue working with our team in gaining the expertise in the database so that we are able to produce our own reports. We are making progress internally on both sides, from IT and ARIA, where we are able to create our own reports directly from the database. Just recently, the ARIA team has made significant progress in being able to extract a lot of the data that we need out. And then we are hoping that in the next couple of weeks, we're going to have a draft of the metrics for OCTC to take a look at before we, you know, formalize them in the Discipline System Statistical Report in June. Another area that we have been unable to push out to production is the State Bar Court portal. There have been some issues with the portal that have prevented the court from approving it for rollout, although over the last couple of weeks, we've made some progress in that area, and we're going to be, we're going to start planning, deployment planning meeting early next week to meet with the internal, you know, IT and communications just to assess where, what other areas on our website will be impacted and will need to be updated when we roll out the portal. And I would suspect that probably in the next couple of weeks, we will have the portal live and available to the public. And just overall, I think we've been really struggling to get the, you know, the fixes that we need over the last few months. And then hopefully, you know, in the next couple of weeks, we're going to see, you know, some significant progress before our second steering committee that we're going to hold in a couple of weeks.
So the problems that you're having, are they, you said the functionality that it's not working. Is your feeling that it's a problem with the system? Or like, are they pushing back and saying, no, 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 your specs were wrong? Like, what is the, where is, why are you having trouble getting things fixed?
So on the functionality issue with the platform, there's the way we assign cases, for instance. The functionality is core functionality from the product. However, when we configure it the way it's supposed to be configured, it is not doing what it's supposed to do. We've gone through several rounds of testing with Tyler, and they come back and say it's working as designed. However, in our production environment, it's not. Just today, we are deploying some logging utilities in both of our environments, production and the other one, just to track the behind-the-scenes activities that are occurring so that hopefully it will help them diagnose and tell us why it's not working. But this is not something that we've asked for as a custom development. This is just core product functionality that has not been working and has created some inefficiencies in the intake department.
And is the inability to get it fixed a matter of not getting attention? Or is it a competence issue on their part?
It's not that it's not getting attention. I think the issue in some of these technical defects is sometimes when it's hard to reproduce, it's hard to diagnose. And we've gone through a few rounds of testing, and they've looked at our system a couple of times. And then just last week, they decided that they're going to install a utility that logs certain information, and hopefully it will help their developers identify why it's doing what it's doing.
Have we fully paid them?
No. We're still holding on to a couple of invoices.
Good, okay.
Any other comments? I think it's a substantial, so.
I'm going that way in briefly. I didn't indicate there are any steering committee calls, and I'll reiterate it here. Very concerned. I want to see some very, you know, real progress at the next steering committee meeting, or there's a strong likelihood that I think we're going to have to come back to the board in July with an action, but I'm not sure what that will be at this time. They know that the board is looking at this, is very concerned about it, and hopefully we won't have to do anything to resolve itself. But the pressure's on to make sure this gets fixed.
Well, and that's why I'm asking, is it a matter of getting attention? Or is it just they're not, like, they're doing it, but they can't, they just can't figure it out? I mean, it sounds like a little of both, and now you're getting the attention. So, you know, if you're getting the attention and they can't solve it, you know, that sort of takes them to a whole different realm.
I do have a follow-up meeting tomorrow morning with senior management to follow up on the action items from yesterday's steering committee.
How are you working around these problems now?
Manual processes in some cases, which is, again, is creating some inefficiencies in the office. And then in some areas, we've created, we're able to create some workarounds that are not that efficient, but also continue the process moving.
Any other comments, questions?
I would just add that sort of concurrently, when working aggressively with our vendor, we have begun to develop an alternative approach, which would be how can we effectuate the necessary changes on our own? And it involves gaining a sufficient level of understanding with the backend or the architecture of the system. So we are working on that as well, because they think at some point we need to stop being so entirely dependent on the vendor. And there is a difference between the functionality and their reporting. The reporting, certainly my understanding is, we do ultimately have the capacity to build that knowledge internally and handle that work, as opposed to the functionality in those, a couple of areas where we are having actual functionality problems.
I'd be really hesitant to start trying to manage the functionality ourselves. I mean, it just can snowball, right? I mean, you know, you change one thing and mess something else up, and then you're going to get in a big fight with them over, you know, whose fault it was. I mean, you know, maybe when you, I don't think you're at that point yet, but once you start messing around with the architecture yourself, like, you can really create more problems than you solve.
Well, we don't have the capability, just to clarify, to do anything with the functionality beyond the configuration capabilities that are available to us. But we have the ability to extract data out or get familiar with the backend so that we can write our own reports independently of the resources.
Okay, good. Hatem, thank you. Obviously, this is of the utmost importance to the court.
I'm sorry, are you taking questions from the public by any chance from the phone?
Not at this time, but I'll give you an opportunity later. We had an opportunity for a public comment earlier, but I will give you an opportunity shortly. Thank you, Hatem. So I just want to say, this is obviously of the utmost importance, and I've seen the internal emails, and I know staff is working very diligently on this and trying to get performance of the context so we can have this system fully operational to support our operations. Next, I'm going to move on to, actually, I'll pause for a second. It sounds like we have one person on the line for public comment, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. So why don't we just pause and take public comment now? If you could give us your name, and please limit your comments to three minutes, and we're glad to hear your thoughts.
Thank you for the opportunity. Hi, my name is Jean Chau. I'm with Manning and Cass. I'm also a member of the Association of Discipline Defense Counsel, and I only had a couple of questions really relating back to the case management system and the impact that it may be having on a couple of different departments. My question is, is there any workaround that we can get Court Docket and a case calendar online? My understanding from the court is that because of the new system, the Court Docket and case calendar system is not operational at this time. But it is such a benefit to have that data or information live and available for participants in State Bar Courts.
All right, thank you. Hatem or Leah, is that something that you can address?
Hatem was addressing that with his comments about the portal.
Yeah, and we're working very closely now with the different departments to roll out the State Bar Court portal, which I anticipate will be in the next couple of weeks. And that's going to allow the public to search cases and documents for current cases and historical records from the court. Unfortunately, the effort to make the older version of the docket to work with the new case management system is substantial. And because the portal is coming, it was not, it's not a good investment of resources to spend that kind of effort. But we should have that in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Hatem, and thank you, Ms. Chau, for your comments. We're going to resume with our business agenda, item 3G, which is a request for approval of the Los Angeles County Bar Association of proposed revisions to that organization's mandatory fee arbitration rules. And I recognize Andrew Tough coming to the table, and also our colleague, Andrew, who I don't like to answer, I apologize.
Hi, I'm Isabel Wu, I'm a staff attorney with the Manager of Fee Arbitration Program, which is part of the Office of Probation Competence.
Great, thank you for coming to speak to us today.
Okay, so the Fee Arbitration Program has three items on the agenda today. The first, item G, is from the Los Angeles County Bar Association, or LACBA for short. They are requesting to revise their rules of procedure for fee arbitration, specifically their rule on arbitrator compensation. Their goals in amending this rule are to simplify the language of the rule and also to adopt a hourly compensation rate similar to that in the State Bar Model Rule on arbitrator compensation. And also, it's our understanding that LACBA has determined that this rule change is necessary to assist them in attracting and retaining volunteer fee arbitrators. In the agenda item, we do note that their proposed hourly rate of compensation of $175 per hour is slightly higher than the current model rule rate of $150. But the Committee on Mandatory Fee Arbitration did take a look at this, and they determined that it was still within the range of acceptable hourly rates for compensation.
Okay, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I'm deferring to my colleague, Ms. Liu, on this item, although we are appearing together.
Okay, very good, thank you. Questions, discussion? Not yet, your motion. We have a motion in a second. Can we substitute the roll call? I think we can. Any objections, substitute the roll call? Hearing none, item 3G is approved, deemed approved. Next, item 3H, this is a request to circulate for public comment and amendments to Rule 38.1 of the State Bar Model Rules of Procedure and Fee Arbitrations, as well as State Bar Rule 3.536E.
Correct, and I will take this item, and thank you for introducing me, Mr. Slague. I'll just introduce myself really quickly. My name is Andrew Tough, and I'm the Supervising Attorney in the Office of Professional Competence. And before I begin on this item, I must apologize. The agenda item that was posted last Friday contained a revision, a Scrivener's error, is how I'm characterizing it, an error on my part. And I have a revised, corrected copy of that agenda item. I'm happy to pass it out for anyone who did not receive that. I assume that's most of you, so let me just pass that out right now. Okay, so just really quickly, the agenda item correctly states, we presented our proposal to the Committee on Mandatory Fee Arbitration at their May 3 meeting, and they suggested a revision, to which staff agreed. And that revision is accurately captured in the item with respect to the State Bar Model Rule, a procedure for fee arbitration, 38.1. But I failed to make the corresponding correction to State Bar Rule 3.536E, which is the similar rule regarding arbitrator compensation for State Bar fee arbitration proceedings. But nonetheless, it's been corrected, and it doesn't change the item substantially, but I just wanted you to be aware of that. And this item is a request for authorization for a 45-day public comment with respect to these two rules. Staff believes that the suggested revisions will help clarify the rule, improve the administration of the rule, and be further protective of parties who go through fee arbitration. Currently, the arbitrator compensation rule states, quote, "Unless waived in writing, each arbitrator will be compensated per hour for each hour, for each additional hour after a four-hour hearing." However, anecdotally, staff's aware that many arbitrators do not seek compensation for hours that extend, for hearings that extend beyond four hours. And such a result is to the benefit of parties who are participating in fee arbitration. So staff is recommending that the rule be revised with a first sentence, which would state that the arbitrator has the discretion to seek compensation for hearings that extend beyond four hours, as opposed to the default, which would be as long as it goes beyond four hours, the party's on the hook for compensation. Secondly, the rule is being revised to ask the parties to agree in writing in advance of the hearing that they will compensate the arbitrator should the hearing extend beyond four hours. And then finally, there's a provision added to the end of the rule that whether or not there's an agreement to compensate the arbitrator, is the arbitrator him or herself, or the panel chair, there's three arbitrators, who controls the length of the proceeding, and that is to avoid an unintended consequence of the rule of one party saying, "I never agreed to compensation, therefore, I'm not going to participate beyond four hours." Or, "I did agree to compensation, and I don't want to continue to participate." The arbitrators have an obligation to conduct full and fair hearings, and we just want to reiterate that as part of the rule. So with that being said, we're requesting a 45-day public comment for those revisions.
Great, thank you, Andrew. Questions or discussion? Okay, so let's move to the item, do you have a second? Thank you. Any objections to substituting the roll call? Hearing none, item 3H is deemed approved. And, okay, we're in the home stretch, we're moving on to our last item today, Andrew.
Yes.
Item 3I, revisions to sample fee agreement forms.
Yes, this is a request to publish the sample fee agreement forms on the State Bar website following their circulation for public comment. Some of you may be aware, since 1987, the State Bar has had some form of a sample fee agreement available to the public. From time to time, the Committee on Mandatory Fee Arbitration has updated these sample fee agreements, whether it's change in the law or change in the rules of professional conduct. And specifically, last fall, they began to undertake updates And specifically, last fall, they began to undertake updating these forms with the new rules of professional conduct, which became operative on November 1st of 2018. However, in addition, we were fortunate because there's also, in addition to the Evidence Code as of January 1st, which requires disclosure to a client before engaging in a mediation about the limitations of information that might be shared with respect to mediation. And so that provision was also added to these sample fee agreements, which I think is a great benefit because that is a new and important element in the law. And that will help a lot of clients and attorneys to be aware of that provision. All that being said, these went out for public comment. We did receive two public comments, they're both detailed in the item. One requested some revisions with respect to family law. The Committee on Mandatory Fee Arbitration considered that comment in full and notes that these are simply sample fee agreements, they can be tailored for anybody in this area. And a few of the comments highlighted there were already governed by rules of professional conduct, so they deemed it not necessary to make a revision. Secondly, there was a public comment which seemed to submit a sample for a criminal defense fee agreement. The committee also reviewed that and felt many of the provisions contained in that sample were handled in their sample fee agreement forms in a more fulsome manner, more descriptive manner. So they did not deem it appropriate to amend the sample fee agreements with respect to that comment. And so they moved and approved those sample fee agreements and now they're before you for permission to publish on the State Bar's website.
All right, thank you, Andrew. Discussion, we'll see if your office can go three for three. That's amazing, Jim.
Given that the Committee for Mandatory Fee Arbitration is winding down, is there a plan for how we're going to handle review of these in the future? Are we going to set like a timeline for how often we review these? Should we be shifting it over to the California Lawyers Association? And we should actually get them involved at this point as well. We're going to post this on our website so that they know that they're, so they can advertise it to their membership because I've seen a few questions come out about where they are and nobody can find them right now, so.
Sure.
What's the plan?
So I don't know that there's a specific plan that's been fleshed out with respect to your specific question. However, I will say, as you are probably aware, the Committee on Professional Responsibility and Conduct will be onboarding two members going forward that have fee arbitration background. Much of the provisions in the sample fee agreement are derived from rules of professional conduct, professional responsibility duties that are found in the State Bar Act, and as well as case law of the ethicists that are on the committee in combination with hopefully at least these two folks, there could be more, who also have experience in fee arbitration, could be a really good informed body to help review developments in the law and amend these sample fee agreements when necessary. But that might be a decision for executive staff or the board, but that would be my recommendation, should it be deemed appropriate, that the task be retained by the State Bar to have sample fee agreements available to the public.
Anyone else? Do you have your motion?
It's on the move.
Any objections, substituting the roll call? Hearing none, item 3I is deemed approved, and unless I hear an objection, we are ready to adjourn. We are adjourned.
...
It's good to see you again. Sorry that life has always sometimes...
Welcome to Revisionless Plus conferencing. Enter your conference card, followed by the pound or hash. Thank you. If you are the leader, press star now. Please enter your leader PIN, followed by the pound or hash sign. To start or join your conference, press 1. You will now be placed into conference. After joining the call, to record the conference for those who may miss this call or for future playback, press star 2.
Best is for the last. The other committee have come to order. Can we get your roll?
Rotten?
Here.
Chula?
Three, okay.
Valen?
Duran?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Manning?
Here.
There, is there anybody on the phone who would care to make a public comment? Or anybody here in the office in a second? Hearing and seeing none, we will move on. I don't have any charitable work other than to commend John and David for their wonderful work on this financial statements. You will notice that we had to rush through this so it could get submitted by, before this meeting, by April 30th, so that was done and David will present the item 3 in just a second. There is one item on the consent agenda. Will be that approved unless needed by consent. Okay, will be approved. Regular business, item 3 of, John, you all right?
Thank you, and for the interest of time, I'll try to make my remarks as brief as possible. So today, myself and David Bolick, who is the partner for MGO, who is your external auditors, independent auditors, are here to present the 2018 annual financial statements. Just quickly, required part of the Business and Professions Code 6145. As I mentioned, MGO, who is your external auditors, actually were hired last November. Statements and the responsibility of the financial statements is by management and the Office of Finance prepares those statements. Today, there's really the two major reports, the annual audited financial statements and then the statement of expenditures on mandatory fees, and this is related to the Keller decision.
John, is your mic on?
Yeah, it is.
Your party here?
Yeah.
Maybe you can move it that way.
Yes, okay. And then just the, so there's the audited financial statements, the mandatory fee report, and then the third report, which I'll let David talk to, is the report to the audit committee and to the Board of Trustees. So just briefly, what is in the audited financial statements? It is, or includes, the independent auditor's report, and that is what we call their opinion on our financial statements, and that's what leads the overall report. There is a section, Management Discussion Analysis, which talks about the trends within the financial statements and comparison to prior years. There's the basic financial statements, which are your standard balance sheets, income statement, and cash flows. Notes to the basic financials and then require supplemental information. So stuff about pension and OPEB schedules, including also program fund schedules. So that would actually show you the breakdown of specific funds, like Legal Services Trust Fund, the Bank Settlement Fund, Client Security Fund. And then finally, the mandatory fee report, which is also part of the overall financial reports. So just the highlights, I won't go into much detail and refer to, at least for assets, there was a decline over 13 million, really attributed to two major things. One is the spend down of bank settlement funds. As you know, the large settlement funds that we received were spending down about nine, low over $9 million a year. And then with the separation of CLA, there was a over $7 million payout to them, which reduced cash investments we look over year over year. The other one, increases in capital assets, when we talk about new systems or new improvements in billing, there was increases in both, in both of those areas for capital assets. For liabilities, the overall decline, a very slight decline. The big one out there I want to highlight is just the pension obligation, which declined based on really the performance of the overall plan. The other one is just under the income, or under the fees. This billing cycle was a little more successful than the prior billing cycle, people, just the system and notifications and payments more timely. And then just overall, the net position had declined as well, mainly because of those payments for both the bank settlement and CLA. This is the system in net positions, I won't go into the details, I provide a summary. This does compare 2018 to 2017 and 2016, gives you a three-year comparison. The trends are very similar, assets declined, you know, even from 2016 to 2017. So when I go into operating revenues, just quickly, overall revenues increased 13.3 million. Trust fund, I think we had mentioned, the increase in interest rates and money coming in from IOTA was significant, 13.9 million when you look year over year. One of the declines was in sections, without sections, revenue declined 7.7 million, plus expenditures declined by an equal amount. Legal Specialization Fund actually had an increase. If you remember, there was a fee holiday in 2017 when that was reinstated in 2018, so there was an increase of 1.6 million. And then operating expenses, just to highlight really the two big ones, grant expenses, which have to do with the additional money from IOTA. And then OCPC had expenditure increase of about $4 million, which was about 10% from the prior year, related for operations for OCPC. And then just non-operating revenues and expenses, the big one was interest earnings during that period of time. This is just the charts, just to show you the comparison for revenues. You can see licensing fees and donations increased State Bar wide. The third item down there, trust account revenue, you can see that 13 million dollars increase. The next four items are those revenues that were really assigned to sections that are no longer part of the bar, the State Bar. And that's really the big highlights, revenues. Expenses, as you know, the main expense within State Bar is the Chief Power Council and State Bar Court, we talked about the discipline system, $4 million increase in OCPC. And then if you look down at the bottom, you can see that one, grants had the increase, plus sections had a 7.8 million dollar increase. plus sections had a 7.8 million dollar decrease in expenditures when you look. The other one I just want to highlight is the unallocated pension expense. Because of the interest returns within the pension plan that's managed by CalPERS, there was a decline in that aspect. And the last one, you can see that payment to CLA for over $1 million. So the summary, financial statements really covered last year from the calendar year of January to... January 1st to December 31st. As Mark said, we were a little behind this year, really rushing around at the last minute to one, get the auditors' report finalized, but also in order to meet the statutory deadline of April 30th. As mentioned a little bit, it does have an unmodified opinion, which most people understand as an opinion of the work challenges, and which was mentioned in the report to the Audit Committee and the Board of Trustees. Certainly, we had some staffing issues. We got a late start based on intro not starting until December. It's the first yearly audit, which is always challenging in itself, but we had new staff, certainly myself, when the controller moved, so they just added to the challenge. With that, I'm going to turn it over to David for his brief presentation.
Captain. So the first slide, I just wanted to summarize and make sure you understood what the deliverables were that we issued for State Bar. The first one was an audit of the financial statements, and that's the main financial audit. The second report we issued was on the mandatory fee expenditures, and we completed our audit on that. And for both of those audits, we expressed an unmodified opinion, as John mentioned, commonly referred to as a clean opinion. So there are no modifications to our opinion. We believe those financial statements and the scheduled expenditures were fairly stated. The third report that you see is our report to you, a report to the Audit Committee, and a report to the Board of Directors, which is really required communications that we make to those charged with governance. Those are...those that are...have the responsibility of governing the organization. And we're going to go over those details in the next several slides. I made it kind of easier, rather than having to read the report, I'll walk you through the key elements of that report. So the first thing to just clarify is our responsibility as your auditors. First responsibility is to express an audit opinion, which we did on the financial statements, that they're presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. That's the first objective. The second is to let you know that we perform that audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. And our objective there is to report on whether or not the financial statements are fairly stated, which is reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance. The third bullet, or the third item is internal controls. We evaluate the internal controls for purposes of the audit, to develop our audit procedures, to ensure that the financial statements are fairly stated. But we don't develop that, the internal controls or evaluate the internal controls for the purpose of expressing an opinion on the internal controls themselves. So there's a limitation there, I just want you to be aware of. And then finally, the findings, if we come across something that is either control-related or compliance-related, we'll communicate that to this committee. And that's our four primary objectives for the audit. And so we're required to communicate certain things to this committee. And the first two bullets, we communicated during planning. We had a meeting back in November at the Audit Committee meeting, where we discussed our responsibilities as your auditors, and we discussed the scope and timing of the audit. We went through some details there. So I'm not going to rehash that, but the results of the audit are the next level of communications. And we've communicated these results in a written form in the report to the Audit Committee. We cover things like qualitative aspects of accounting practices. And we always want to let you know when there's changes in consistency from year to year. And so the State Bar implemented GASB 75, that's the new OPEB standards. There were some pretty significant changes as a result of that, and I'll go through that in the next slide. Any...if we encountered any difficulties during the audit, we did not, I'm happy to report. We also are required to communicate whether or not there is any correct or uncorrected financial statement in the statements. And we are going to cover one item at the end of the report. We're required to communicate whether or not there were any disagreements with management, and there were none. Management representation. So management signs a representation letter, making certain representations to the auditors that the information they provided was true and accurate, that the State Bar complies with all material laws and regulations. And it's just, there's a certain number of representations in there. And I share that with you because we establish materiality through that representation letter. And we'll cover that a little bit more in the next section. Management consultations with other independent accountants, to our dollars, there were none. And so we're happy to report that. And then finally, any other audit issues, and we didn't have any. The audit, from our opinion, went well, went as planned. We designed the audit when we did our interim back in December. And other than a few delays, which we'll talk about, the audit went as planned, and we have to report the results are good, a clean audit opinion. The next slide is really the new OPEB standards that were implemented during the year. And you might be familiar with the pension standards that were implemented five years ago in 2014. This is a very similar approach to how it's presented. So in 2017, you reported an asset of $12 million in your financial statements, and that was reported as an asset under the old standards. But you really didn't have an asset. You had an unfunded liability in OPEB. But the way it was measured in the past was how you're funding it. So if the actuary said to fund this amount, and you had additional funds to put into that trust, then that would all of a sudden be more than what the actuary said to make, and then you'd have an asset. And so GASB wanted to do away with creating assets of liabilities based on how you're funding the plan and actually base that liability on the true economic substance of whether or not that plan is funded or not. So now, the new standards measure that asset based on the actuarial projection of what those benefit payments will be as a present value, and comparing that to the resources you've set aside in the trust. Okay? And so based on that, you have actually, again, an asset at the end of the year of $8 million. But as that second bullet indicates, you didn't have an asset at the beginning of the year. You actually had a net OPEB liability at the beginning of the year of 3.5 million. And what happened during the year is you made a change, a change in benefit terms. You've changed your healthcare plan, moved it to CalPERS. And through that process, you actually saved $10 million in projected liability that the actuary projected, the savings. And so that $10 million benefit, I call it a gain, you changed your position from a liability position to an asset position at the end of the year. And because that $10 million was a significant change, management wanted to present that as a special item, so that you didn't run that $10 million through your operating expenses, but instead called it out separately, so it wouldn't really distort your operations from year to year when you tried to compare it. So that was a good thing, it was a big savings there. And so now, you have a...your result is you have a life...excuse me, you have an asset of $8 million for your OPEB plan. And that'll change from year to year as you have new valuation, new OPEB valuations.
Sorry, before you go on, so when you removed the $12.1 million asset, where is it?
So...okay, good question, good question. So on the second bullet there, you restated your beginning net position. So your net position dropped down by 14.4 million. And the reason it went down...
Did it get charged to something, or?
It changes your beginning net position. It didn't get charged to any specific account or expense. So what happens is your 2017 financial statements are under the old standards. But because you can't apply the new standards going back, because the information just isn't available, you change it as an adjustment to your beginning net position.
I see, okay.
So it never actually flows through your...
So there's a discontinuity between the two years that's explained in the book.
Yeah, it's a...yeah, it's a restatement of the beginning net balance, and it really never flushes through your revenues or expenses.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So that was the one...the one change in the accounting practice that was different in past years. Everything else was consistent. As I mentioned, we talked a little bit about materiality. There was one adjustment that was...that actually State Bar made a correction in their billing. But the adjustment related to the prior year, related to 2017. And so typically, you only restate your beginning net position for material items. And so they ran that through current year expenses, but really should have been, you know, if it was technically correct, would have run through the prior year. It was $1 million, the correction is made, and as of the end of the year, it's correct. But it's a past adjustment, so we want to let you know that. That was an adjustment that was passed on, that was considered to be immaterial to the financial statements. And finally, just reporting on internal controls. You know, we evaluated internal controls for purposes of the audit. We looked at your payroll, your disbursements, your billing and receipts. And we didn't identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, and those would be matters that were required to report to this committee. We did identify one control deficiency, and John covered it a little bit during our discussion. And that was, you know, there was a delay in the audit, and we had to deviate from the audit plan in terms of timing. And so we just wanted to let this committee know the cause of that. And it wasn't for a lack of effort, but there was definitely... You know, a first-year audit is always challenging to gather the information and build a permanent file, and build an understanding of the internal controls. And with the new staff at State Bar trying to go through the process of closing the books, it was a challenge. But we're happy to report that we were able to get through that and meet the deadline, the mandatory deadline. And so we just want you to be aware of that, and that's why the audit was issued at the end of April, when it was originally planned to be in the middle of April. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on the audit process or the audit itself.
So, John, did I understand the...right, I know it wasn't a material number, but it was still $1 million bucks that charged. So people were getting double charged, is that what happened? Like the system was double...like, did it...so people call up and complain? How did we not know that?
Well, they did, and this was, you have to remember, this was last year, right? This was in 2000...in December of 2017 and early 2018, and I wasn't here.
Right, right.
But there was, in the system, the way credit card was processing and duplicating charges. And so what occurred, and we actually...and I handed it out. There's the report that talks about it.
Yeah, I saw it.
And so really, what happened was, is duplicate payments occurred. We recorded properly what were fees within the general fund and the other funds. But the overpayments that were made were recorded as miscellaneous revenue in December, instead of being deferred as a liability, because that wasn't really our revenue, right? But it was recorded, and there was...if you go back and look really closely at the miscellaneous revenue for the general fund, it was a million...it was a little over $1 million higher than it had been in the prior years. And so it was recorded as revenue, and as we go through and try to balance out this year, it was very clear that when we made those refunds, it threw off this year's mandatory taxes.
Okay.
So, you know, and what's material is interesting, because, you know, again, this was revenue we recorded incorrectly in 2017, and now we're expensing it to...
I mean, I understand it's not material, it's just, $1 million is a lot of people being double charged, right? And that is really not something, you know, we want to have...
Yeah, and I will...
So that's fixed, though, that's not happening anymore.
Yes, this year, you know, I should always say, knock on wood. You know, the process and reconciliations, the daily reconciliations and those aspects, that if someone made a duplicate payment, it wasn't our error. There's always duplicate payments because agencies or law firms will pay for certain people and stuff, and that's not uncommon.
It's not one person getting twice for the same transaction.
Exactly, or three times in the same case.
Oh, yes, even better, yeah.
So, yeah, we do have a recommendation and then a resolution for the Audit Committee to confirm the actions of the Chair and Vice Chair, and then submit the audit of financials to...and the statement of mandatory fees to the Board. So that is on the Board's agenda tomorrow, but just simply to receive those reports. So certainly staff's available for any questions for the committee.
I'm reading what's on there.
Do I hear a motion?
I'm moved.
Second. Any objections to the roll call? And Dean Crete? I think that's all our business. And we are adjourned.